Okay, thank you and welcome to the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty three meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. We welcome your attendance and we're glad to see you here tonight and we'll start going down through our order of business here with our invocation and pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Mark Marion.
Let's pray. Much kind of gracious heavenly Father would come to you tonight, asking your blessing upon this meeting. Be with us and watch over us. Give us the knowledge that you would give us to make the right decisions during this meeting, dear Lord, for the citizens of Surrey County. Bless our men and women in uniform, home and abroad. Bless everyone in this hat place tonight. Bless their families, go with them as each one of us goes our separate ways. Once again, I asked you to be with us tonight as we go over the county's business. These many blessings we ask in thy name, amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, Commissioner Johnson, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and the agenda is approved. All right, we also have the minute meeting, the meeting minutes from the third of January, two thousand twenty-three for approval, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the January third, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes, do I have a second? Have a second, Commissioner Tucker, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. All right, we also have our consent agenda, Mr. County Manager, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first item are the tax department end of month summaries, charges and reports. Second is the child protection team, two thousand twenty-two annual report. Third item is a position classification plan amendment to eliminate a position. Fourth item is to approve workers' compensation claims and settlement activities for the quarter ending December thirty-first. And finally, there's a position reclassification in EMS, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented by County Manager Chris Knoll.
I have a motion, Mr. Tucker, to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Johnson, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and the consent is approved. Okay, at this time, we'll do our Eagle Scout recognition, which is always one of the highlights of the Board of County Commissioners. And gentlemen, if you would, go down front. Okay, we're going to recognize our Eagle Scouts and I'll start out with the, with the one that I have, we have several troops tonight and Mr. Jacob Allen Smith, Troop five ninety-six, if you would.
I want to read your certificate here.
Right over here. All right, this is a certificate of recognition for Jacob Allen Smith, Troop five ninety-six. Jacob has hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two. And for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County, this seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations, Jacob.
Thank you.
And if you would stand over here and we're going to line all you boys up and get you to tell us about your projects. Okay, Commissioner Marion.
Mitchell Toss Cottle, Troop five sixty-one. Glad to have you tonight. Mitchell, you hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of your attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two and for bringing honor not only to yourself, your troop and your family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations. Benjamin Isaac Deli Cruz, Troop five ninety-six. Buddy, congratulations. You hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of your attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two and for bringing honor not only to yourself, your troop and your family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this the seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations, buddy. Edward Arnold Radford III, Troop five fifty-three. Is hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two. And for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County, present this the seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations. Byron Hall Carson, Troop five forty-five. Is hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two. And for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County, presented this the seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations.
Bryson Patrick McBride, Troop five forty-five. I see you here come on up. There's some other familiar faces back there in Troop five forty-five, of which I was fortunate to be a part of for a few years with one of my sons. Thank you for coming, all of you troops. You go by Bryson? Yeah, Bryson, thank you for coming, Bryson Patrick McBride, Troop five forty-five. You are hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of your attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand and twenty-two and for bringing honor not only to yourself, your troop and your family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, and congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Marcus J. Oopsaw. Think he's going to be here, Max Isaac Cummings, Flincham. Welcome. This is a certificate of recognition from the County of Surrey for Max Isaac Cummings, Flincham, Troop five sixty-one. Max is hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two. And for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County, this seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations, sir.
Jordan Robert Emmon, Troop five ninety-six. Congratulations, gentlemen, and ladies. Jordan Robert Emmon is hereby presented this certificate of recognition in expression of the board's admiration and appreciation of his attainment of Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America in two thousand twenty-two. And for bringing honor not only to himself, his troop and his family, but to the youth and all citizens of Surrey County. Presented this seventeenth day of January, two thousand twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chairman, Van Tucker, Vice Chairman and Commissioners Bill Goins, Larry Johnson and Mark Marion, congratulations, gentlemen. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to say everybody in five ninety-six, here before long, I want all y'all to be city commissioners in Manary. And the rest of you out in the county, y'all can take all of our places right here, before long. So go ahead, we'll let you know when the filing dates happen, sir. And congratulations, we have Commissioner Bill Goins here, who's an avid scouter his whole life and and still loves all the aspects of scouting. I thought I'd give him a little heads up, he could speak all night on scouting, congratulations again.
Okay, we'll start right here with you, Jordan, and we'll let you tell a little bit about your project when you get through, let's remain up here because we want to get a picture.
Okay, so for my project, I was tasked with building forming boards for two batting cage pads at Graham Field, seventy-two feet long, about twenty-three feet wide, four inches high. And so after I built the forming boards, we would come in and they would pour the concrete and I would help rake it in, smooth it out and then give it a brush finish. I did this for both of them. Had a few difficulties with COVID, but we got it all straightened out and got it all done and it was, it was a lot of fun, thank you.
For my Eagle Scout project, I constructed a blessing box for my local church, Little Hope and Arat Norco, in Arat. Thank you.
All right, so for my Eagle Scout project, I put up a flagpole at my church, Sulfur Springs Baptist in Pile Mountain, North Carolina. And me and my dad, we got up on day one and we poured the concrete base ourselves and the the next day we came back with some boys from my troop and we actually put the pole up, but I want to thank everyone who helped me out, yeah, right. So for my project, I renovated the kitchen at my local church, First United Methodist in Pile Mountain. We tore out the flooring, tore out the wallpaper, repainted, put in new countertops, put in a new sink. And I want to thank everyone who helped me in that process, thank you. So for my project, it consisted of a paver set cross-shaped prayer garden that I did at my local church, Blues Grove Baptist. And it benefited the church by allowing classes on Wednesday night to go outside during the summer and just enjoy nature and just get a different, get a different view of, instead of a classroom, so thank you.
For my Eagle Scout project, I constructed a tennis backboard at my local high school, Manary High School. And it helps people practice their serving and helps help the tennis team as well. And yeah, that's basically the, what I did for mine.
For my Eagle Scout project, I repainted a hallway and built a trophy case at West Stokes High School. I'm in the band, I'm the drum major and I feel like the band didn't have enough recognition, so we put a trophy case in the band room. And there's a long hallway that the music classes are connected to and at least three hundred students go out of that hallway every day and the paint was pretty scratched and faded, so we went ahead and repainted the hallway.
For my Eagle Scout project, I repainted and refurbished the nursery at my local church, United Methodist Church down in Mount Derry. We fixed it up so that we could try to attract new people to come down to the church and go to the nursery. It's used every Sunday so that where the kids can go. Ever since the parents want to go pray and go to church and we can't have the kids being in other distractions, so.
Good job. You're almost done, guys. Feel your pain on their recognition marching bands. Larry, can you take one step to your right, Larry? Thank you. Oh, that's one of the better ones. Congratulations, guys.
Anybody here from five twenty-nine, Troop five twenty-nine? Okay, we'll hold on to this one.
We hope you use all that up.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate our scouts, what you do for our county, very, very important. You guys set leadership role models for, for all of our youth. Okay, at this time, we'll have our FY twenty-two audit presentation, Travis, oh, excuse me, I got to do the open forum, I'm sorry. About missed that. Okay, at this time, I'll call for open forum. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak to any matter pertinent to this county or county government, any concerns you may have, please do so at this time, three minutes states your name and your telephone number, open forum is open. All right, no takers for open forum. We'll move on to Mr. Travis Keever Gould Killian CPAs for the FY twenty-two audit presentation.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board, can you all hear me, okay? I get a thumbs up, yeah, okay, good. All right, so we have concluded our audit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two of Surrey County's financial statements.
Maybe not. Okay, try it again, Travis.
All right, we have concluded our audit of Surrey County's financial statements for the fiscal year twenty-two. The audit report is still technically in draft format, will be for a couple more days as we try to wind up just a couple little bits of the mini moving parts that go into one of these, but we'll have it uploaded to the LGC and in just a couple of days, the numbers are finalized and we were, we're comfortable, go ahead and reporting on them. Let me go to the next slide, please. So this is a summary of the results of our audit. The objective of an audit is to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance that financials are fairly stated and counties in compliance with major program requirements. An audit includes examining evidence on a test basis to support the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements by using professional judgment and evaluating management's accounting policies and estimates. We've issued two opinions so far, or will in the next day or two. The financials, we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the county. Again, that means we believe the county's financials are consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. And we will be issuing a report on internal control over financial reporting, compliance over financial reporting, which is where we test your major internal control systems that relate to your financial statements, so we test any, any cash handling procedures. We spend a lot of time testing where money's spent, we look for proper budget authorization, make sure the purchase order system's in place and encumbered system's in place. As far as payroll goes, we make sure that employees are being paid at an authorized rate and that they're, they're being paid based on hours that they say they work and supervisors approve. And so through all of those processes, we had no findings related to Surrey County's internal control. So that's, that's a good thing, it's a clean financial statement audit and no findings on internal control or compliance, that's as far as the opinions we issue, that's, that's about as good as you can get. Go ahead and go to the next slide. This one's a summary of your general fund revenue that comes in. But most counties in the state, the vast majority of your funding comes from adblockance taxes and local option sales tax. You get about forty million dollars a year, thirty-nine in adblockance tax. And of course, that was up a little bit this year due to the revaluation. The, the blue bar charts this year, the, the red line chart is the amounts from last year, so local option sales tax was twenty-six point six million this year, that continues to go to go up a lot, a ton in the last three or four years. It was, I think about two and a half or three million more in two thousand twenty-two than it was twenty twenty-one and about six or seven million over what was budgeted. So local option sales tax continues to be a boon for you all like it is most governments in the state. Restricted intergovernmental, which is, is the grant funding that's accounted for in the general fund, is about thirteen million dollars and then other, which includes investment earnings, sales and services, things like that, were another thirteen million. Go to the next slide. This is the same chart, just looking at the expenditure side of things. So again, like most municipalities in the state, public safety, education and human services are the three primary functions. And again, we had a, had a pretty decent increase in public safety expenditures. Education and human services were relatively flat. Other includes things like culture and recreation, debt service, things like that. Let's go to the next slide, please. This one shows your fund balance in total and your fund balance available over the last four years and you can see the, the kind of general upward trajectory of total fund balance, it was about forty-three million back in two thousand nineteen. And it went to forty-six, then fifty-three, and then this year jumped up to sixty-four million. And then same for available fund balance, it's, it's followed roughly the same path of a gradual increase for two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one and then again, also went up about ten million this year. Your, your ten million dollar increase in fund balance for FY twenty-two, those increases like that are being seen pretty widely across the state. Couple of factors go into it, number one, sales tax, like we talked about, has continued to go up. You all had a property tax revaluation which generated a couple of million dollars extra in addition to last year. We recognized for about four and a half million dollars in ARPA funding, so your American Rescue Plan funding, about four and a half million dollars of that was released from restriction and moved into the general fund. And then we doubled up on our Health Department cost settlement report. The state was a little bit late getting them out for FY twenty-one. Your FY twenty-two report came in on time, so you had two years worth of reports on those and those are about a million dollars each. So all of those factors going in together resulted in about a ten million dollar increase in fund balance in the general fund. Go to the next slide. Excuse me, this shows fund balance available as a percentage of net expenditures. This is a benchmark that the local government commission uses, they say that at a minimum you should be at eight percent. So if you divide your annual expenditures by twelve, that's about eight, eight percent should be spent in one month. And so they basically say you should have one month of expenditures on hand at all times as an absolute minimum. You all are about fifty-six percent this year, so well above that. The red line below that is other counties in North Carolina with populations between fifty and a hundred thousand. So relatively similar sized units to you all, at least as far as population goes. And you can see that, again, you're well above the, the LGC minimum requirement and you're, you're trending pretty well above your peer group also. Going to the next slide. This next one, one of your, the, the two largest enterprise funds you have, the landfill fund, two thousand twenty-two, you had working capital of nine hundred and fifty thousand, that's essentially the current assets over current liabilities. You've got about three months of expenditures on hand in your working capital. Your unrestricted net position and/or retained earnings in a, in a business is about negative six million, that's purely due to the closure and post-closure care liabilities that have to be recognized for the landfill fund, those have gone up pretty dramatically the last couple of years as a result of a couple of things, some changing environmental standards and also just the inflationary environment that we're in. Those closure and post-closure costs are projected out over the next seventeen or eighteen years, so when inflation goes up, it makes that projection eighteen years from now go up even more, so you've seen a pretty big increase in that liability from FY twenty to twenty-one, then also from FY twenty-one to twenty-two, so that, that results in, in your negative net position there. Operating income in the landfill was negative seven hundred and forty-six thousand and again, that's because there was about a one point five million dollar charge for post-closure costs in the landfill, to get the accrual up to what the engineers think ultimately those costs will be for the county. The landfill on a positive note did generate one point six million dollar in cash flow from operating activities. So the closure, post-closure liability at this point, so is a non-cash item, it's an estimate of what you'll have to pay in the future. Accounting standards require you to go ahead and record it now. The cash flow looks at obviously the more current view of things, what has actually costed you to provide landfill services. And you all generated about one point six million dollars in cash from operating activities, which can be used to fund capital improvements, debt service and of course, that post-closure liability. Your net overall increase in cash was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, so we did some capital improvements and had some debt service. So we used a good bit of our operating cash flow for those items left. So we used a good bit of our operating cash flow for those items left you with about $136,000 increase. Next slide, please. This one is for the other of the two large enterprise funds, the Mount Aerie Surrey County Airport Fund. Again, working capital, you've got about 912,000. That's about 12 months worth of expenditures. Your fund balance or your unrestricted net position is about 916,000. You had an operating loss this year of 905,000. And that's, that's simply because the operating losses is because at this point, the airport is still relying on contributions from Surrey County. The money that Surrey County contributes to the airport is, is not considered part of operations. And your change in net position was a positive 1.1 million. And the airport generated a negative $213,000 in cash from operating activities, which speaks to what I was just talking about with the, the airport still having a reliance on Surrey County. But you had a net increase in cash in the airport of about 2.7 million. That's because the airport received some grant money in advance. Some state budget directed grant money came in north of two and a half million, if my memory serves. It hasn't been spent yet, so that's sitting in the bank account. But it's restricted and hasn't been spent, but it does, does lead to a pretty big cash balance at the end of the year. And the next slide. This is the last slide I have and it's your, some property tax statistics over the last three years. Of course, the tax rate dropped based on your revenue neutral projection for FY22 as a result of the revaluation. The reval still generated about 1.6 million in additional collections. Your collection rate was relatively flat, 98.69 to 98.97 to 99%. That's really good, really consistent and sort of at the top end of what we see. So good job as far as that goes. I'm not going to say too much more about property taxes because I'm sure this data is, is pretty familiar to all of you. And you can go to the next slide. I believe that's the last one. Yep, that was all I had. I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has it.
Gentlemen, you have any questions? Looks like a very positive audit, Travis. I think the county's financial position is, continues to be strong. And I think the monies are being managed wisely. Looks like sales tax is the, the big winner here. And the increase in the revenues from reevaluation. You know, you try to maintain a revenue neutral number in reevaluation, but the best you can do at the end of the day, there's still some revenue generated from reevaluation. And I suppose that number would have had to tick down some to, but you know, it's going to be up a few places for some and down for some others and flat for, for other folks. So sales tax, is that what you folks are seeing across the state? Sales tax still being quite strong?
Yes, sir, it is, especially in municipalities about your size. What we're seeing ever since COVID, it started a phenomenon where people are online shopping, which of course brings sales tax back to the local area as opposed to driving to municipalities or larger municipalities, I guess for you all, Winston-Salem or Charlotte. Instead of doing that, people are staying at home, buying stuff on Amazon. That keeps the sales tax dollars in the local area. That's, that seems to be what we're seeing. Seeing some sales tax decreases in larger municipalities, which is, is sort of where that theory comes from.
So Chris, on our quarter cent local option sales tax here, what is that number looking at? Just roughly, rough estimate this year?
I haven't looked at this year. I know last year, when we were working through the budget process, it was about 2.8 million.
So it'll probably be $3 million this year. The, the extra quarter cent that, that we passed here. 2.6.
With the end of 21, 22, it was at 3.2.
Okay, so we're north of $3 million here. The, you know, Surrey County geographics really play a big part in our revenue with Elkin being in one corner of the county. You know, getting sales tax monies out of Wilkes and Yadkin and off I-77 and Mount Aerie being the, the big heavy generator in the other end of the county as well as Pilot and Dobson. It all works out real good for our citizens and I'm very pleased with this audit. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, Travis.
Coming on tonight.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the time presented. We, we always enjoy working with the county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff Steve Hyatt and Dr. Travis Reeves and Sir County Schools. Talk about a SRO grant and school safety update. And also I want to recognize our Surrey County School Board members that are here tonight. Kent Whitaker, Dale Badgett and Clark Glowens, TJ Bledsoe and Tony Hutchins. Glad to see you folks.
Hey, listen, he brought his back up where you are.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. I know Dr. Reeves and maybe SRO Sergeant Hutchins are going to have a school safety update presentation to deliver shortly, I think. And, and I wanted to speak briefly just concerning the possibility of an additional SROs in our schools. Dr. Reeves and the school board have applied for and have been approved and named as a recipient of a grant to help fund more SROs. This process has my full support. As you well know, an emergency situation at a school such as an active shooter is practically on everybody's mind, including law enforcement officers and other first responders. The senseless injuring or killing of an innocent child is in every parent's, is every parent's worst nightmare. As sheriff, I want to continue to work closely with the Surrey County Board of Education and the school system to promote safety on school campuses and promote the most up to date safety equipment. We must, we must protect our teachers and our students.
So who wants to go next? Y'all ready to do that presentation or?
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you again. Maybe we won't have technical difficulty tonight. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for being here and supporting us always. They're only a phone call away and in many cases, just, just a yell down the hallway as, as we talk about SROs. And that's going to kind of be the second part of the, the presentation. I, I thought it would be really good to, for us to kind of give a briefing to the Board of Commissioners on all the things that we've done together. Sheriff's Office, school system and commissioners on all the improvements that we've made to the schools in safety. And as the sheriff said, safety has to be our top priority. It is our top priority and we can never become complacent and think that what we have is, is always going to be enough. And so tonight, I'm going to kind of present to you just some things that we've done. We tried to be proactive and if you will, we'll go through this presentation and we're going to discuss our school safety committee. So the second slide. We do have our board member, all of our board members here tonight. I want to say thank you to them for being here, supporting this initiative. I know safety is important to our Board of Education. They visit our schools and understand the challenges that our teachers and principals face daily. We have a Surrey County School Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Mr. Kent Whitaker. This past summer, we had three separate meetings just to discuss various parts of our school system and ways we could continue to improve. As you can see, the members of that safety committee, Sheriff Hyatt, Captain Hudson, Sergeant Hutchins, as, as well as other folks, principals, teachers. Mr. Glowens was able to attend our last meeting. We, as a result of those three meetings, we created a safety awareness video, both for our employees and for parents, just to let them know what we do in our schools. But also, we want to make sure that people are observant. We want to make sure that our employees understand the importance of locking doors, shutting doors, making sure that we don't have propped doors. All of those things are sometimes can be a creature of habit, but we have to break those habits. And how do we do that? Well, we have to reinforce what we expect. One thing we've also done is we had to go through Apple to develop a new Surrey County Schools mobile app that would allow for push notifications. So if we have a student enrolled in our school system and they have the app on their smart device and they're at Surrey Community College taking a class, if something happens at their home school, they will get a push notification through our alert system to their smartphone. We do this for all of our parents, employees, community members. But it was something that our old mobile app would not do is real time push notification. So that was something that really took us three or four months to get through, get through Apple. It was a little easier through Android devices. One thing that came out of these committee meetings was if you take a building like Franklin Elementary School, you've got four or five buildings. Well, the principal may have a labeling system, the back building, but to a law enforcement officer, it may not be as simple as the back building. Where at North Surrey, we all know the old new wing. But it may not be that simple. So we are working with EMS, with the Sheriff's Office and creating a consistent labeling system of all of our buildings. We're not there yet, but we want to make sure that we label them on the building itself and in diagrams so that when emergency officials respond to the school and we say, go to building X, they know where building X is located and we're consistent in our communication. We've provided key fobs for all of our patrol deputies. That was one of the discussion items that came out. We've, one thing that we've learned, especially post-COVID, it's important to have law enforcement at our schools. And we're asking that our schools make sure that we have a deputy when we open the doors to a public gathering. And that's something I'm paying for at the district level. I'm not expecting principals to pay for those off-duty cops, off-duty sheriff's officers to be there, but I want to make sure that we have law enforcement there. I know Sergeant Hutchins is working on planning some tabletop training for our staff. I know one of our teachers said that's something that would be really helpful if we continue to have opportunities to learn more and learn how to react. We discussed the SRO expansion and we're going to talk about that later tonight. But I am happy to report that the board has entered into a memorandum of understanding with the town of Pilot Mountain. And the town of Pilot Mountain will be providing a full-time SRO at Pilot Mountain Elementary School. This position is to begin January 30th. So we're happy that the town of Pilot has entered into that MOU with the Board of Education. And obviously, we understand there could be some challenges with communication, but we also understand it's great to have a uniformed officer in every school. And in this situation, we'll have this uniformed officer at the elementary school. And that will be one less school that our other elementary SROs have to be in charge of. We are and have had conversations with the town of Dobson to put an elementary SRO at Dobson Elementary School. In fact, I met with the new town manager just last Friday. We've also identified the need for digital signage in our schools, especially our three high schools in the event of a emergency, like to be able to communicate quickly. We've coordinated law enforcement visits and we always have a joint meeting at the beginning of the year just for our school administrators and our SROs. One thing I want to make sure you're aware of on the next slide is that every school has a crisis plan. So we have these crisis plans in our schools. Again, we go follow the state procedures, but in these crisis plans, obviously lockdown procedures, fire drill procedures, tornado drill procedures. Even if we have to evacuate the school, we have a plan, a primary site and a secondary site located in the community. We have a safe school checklist at the beginning of each school year. We ask our principals to, have you done this? Have you done that? As I mentioned, we have district safety procedures. We've also implemented, they say something anonymous reporting software. This is, I'll talk to you a little bit more about this, but our parents, our students, anyone in the community can report a tip and it is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is a free service that the state of North Carolina provides to all school districts. And I'll, I'll report, report out some statistics at the end. The next piece, next slide is, safety doesn't stop with brick and mortar. You can see the investment we've made in technology. And so in Surrey County Schools, we have 423 security cameras. 187 of those are IP cameras, 236 are analog. So the analog cameras are the old digital or the old cameras that aren't high definition. So they're very fuzzy, not very clear. You can't really zoom in. And so you might be able to see a picture, but it's not great. So we've identified the need to replace those analog cameras for digital. And you can see the cost there is 125,000. Walkie talkies, we've got to have the ability to communicate. We have purchased those through a grant that we received, the safety grant that the sheriff mentioned. Cybersecurity, we have to be so secure with our technology. So we have implemented two factor authentication for all of our employees and students for email and privileged Windows accounts. We've installed various firewalls and consolidated a backup system. Moving on to the next slide. Parents expect our students to be safe when they are on the online, when they're online. And so we have a system called Gaggle that, that actively monitors students' communication and looking for threats of violence, of things that might be written in, in the system. So that online safety feature is a fee service that we pay $38,000 a year. We've also implemented a new service called Go Guardian. This filters and monitors user browsing. So we're able to really put a, the teacher is in control of technology in his or her classroom. They see what kids are looking at on their computer and can actively take control of a student's computer from their desk if that student is not exactly where they're supposed to be. And you can understand how that gives the teacher total control and also gives them much more confidence when using the technology in the classroom. Another program that we've added at our three high schools is the name brand is called Synthegix, but it's basically a system that allows our teachers to call a lockdown anywhere, anytime. They carry with them a key card. They press that 10 times in the, the school system. The school will automatically go into lockdown. We have a pre-recorded message. We have lights that begin flashing and all the computer screens are locked. It says the school was in lockdown. So we've added that at all three high schools. We funded all three of those systems through grants. The cost was approximately 46 to $48,000 per high school. So we're very fortunate and we're one of the few high schools in North Carolina that has this Synthegix program. I know just the other day, we had a student that had a seizure at Surrey Central High School. The, the teacher pressed the button three times. The principal got a text message. I need, I need help in my classroom. If the teacher presses the button 10 times, the, the school will automatically go into lockdown. And that's something that our Sheriff's Office, we've trained all of our staff members. If you see something that's irregular, you see something that's out of context, don't wait. Call the school, call the office. We, we really have to train and understand if something doesn't feel right, look right, it probably isn't right. And our staff members have the ability to go into lockdown. We'll, we'll answer questions later. We'll figure it out later, but the key is getting our folks into a safe location. We also have implemented a Dina Kid. This screens visitors coming onto campus. Very effective at, in the front office. So those are the technology items that we've added. Safety doesn't stop with technology. We've also added many mental health supports throughout the school system. And I can say to you, five years ago, six years ago, our teachers would say, I have a student in my classroom. I have a situation. I don't have the tools or the knowledge or the training to handle this. Well, we've worked really hard in our school system to help our teachers understand these situations better and provide some support. We've done this through a federal grant. and provide some support. We've done this through a federal grant. One thing that we have the ability to do are threat assessments. Threat assessments are done by a trained team, a mental health counselor, school counselor, social worker, SRO and administrator. You can see last year, we did a third, we did a total of 13 threat assessments. You can see the breakdown at the school level. This year, as of January 1st, there were nine total threat assessments. That number has increased, but it's so important that if there's a situation that we're uncomfortable with, we get this student some help and we do it immediately. Next slide, I mentioned the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. This is our anonymous tip line. This system is monitored by a group of trained counselors 24 hours a day. I think their home office is located in Florida. This group is provided by the Sandy Hook Promise Group. Or this tip line in the Sandy Hook Promise Group is a group that was created out of the tragedy that happened at Sandy Hook Elementary School. And they have, are trying to help school systems be proactive. In this anonymous tip line, you can obviously go online, you can call a 1-800 number. You will get someone on the other line, someone will engage with you, ask questions. Frequently, we do get questions, or those questions are answered sometimes, sometimes not. As soon as that tip comes in, there's a group of us, the principal, the assistant principal will get the tip, as well as a group of us at the central office. So you can see the number of tips. Last year, we had 126 tips. Eight of those were life safety tips. Non-life safety tips, 118. You can see the source. If you look at this year, we're already up to 90 total tips for the school year. Four life safety tips. I'll give you a good example. This past weekend, we received a life safety tip at 10:27 PM Friday night. Middle school student was exhibiting some mental health issues, confided in their friend, and they were harming themselves by cutting. This friend used the anonymous reporting system. Response was made, and that student was hospitalized that night. These are the things, this anonymous reporting system is so important to keep our kids safe. We've worked and trained all of our students on the system and tried to make them feel comfortable about using it. So if we see something, we need to say something, and that's really the attitude we've tried to create in our schools. General statute, next slide. 476 requires that school staff must have mental health training, so they know what the look for's, ask for's are when it comes to mental health. When is a student really reaching out that they need help? We've, we have trained our staff, and again, this was paid for through our federal grant. You see for a cost of about $20,000. Trained 830 staff last year, new staff this year with the 27. We'll continue to do this because the mental health first aid training has been so beneficial. And then the next slide, you can obviously see, because of the things we've implemented with mental health, we have crisis referrals, school counselor, school social worker, psychologist, behavior support specialist, mental health counselor. You can see the ratios, the number we have versus what's recommended. Last year, we had 76 referrals. This year, we're up to 30. And then you can see the number of suicide risk assessments completed in both years. So mental health is something that our employees, teachers, principals, assistant principals, teacher assistants, bus drivers, they deal with on a daily basis. And we've been trying to work really hard to give them the training necessary and the resources necessary to get our students help. So safety obviously doesn't start with technology. It doesn't stop with brick and mortar. It doesn't start with mental health. It's all these pieces together. The next slide is building maintenance. So the brick and mortar. Look at all the things we've done since 2014. I started in January, on January 1st, 2013, 10 years ago, you could walk into any school on any campus. It was an open campus. If you think about in 10 years' time, how things have changed. And I had the opportunity to meet with a couple commissioners at Dobson Elementary. I think it was Mr. Harris and maybe Buck Golding. Remember, we met at Dobson, you could just walk right in the building, and we were able to put up those TV monitors and that, that door chime system. And it was the first time we had locked the front door of the building. And so we were really worried that parents wouldn't feel welcome in our schools because we didn't want to give off this, this whole attitude that parents aren't welcome. Well, you know, just the opposite has occurred because our parents feel safer with their children in these schools. And obviously, we've had situations across the country that have demonstrated the need for panic alarms in all of our schools. So the investment started in 2014. We've added the Aphone systems where you have to buzz in. The front doors are locked. Then we, in 2015, we worked on the high school campuses, installing the key card systems where all the X, the buildings have keyless access. And then we've, 16, you see all the advancements we've made. And then even at, within the offices in our school system, we've seen the need to have to install Aphone systems. So at maintenance, for example, at the central office, we've had to put some safety features in. So it really doesn't start or stop with just our schools. On the next slide, Phase 1 construction that you approved when we worked on Dobson, Franklin and Mountain Park. Obviously, you remember, we changed the whole vestibule so that when parents enter the building, they can't go directly into the school. They have to divert and go into the office. So again, that's another safety feature that we've been able to add. And then you see the expenses. Safety is not cheap, and these are very often annual expenses that we incur year in and year out repairing these items. The next part of the presentation, Sergeant Hutchins is going to help me talk a little bit more. We're going to move into the SRO grant, and Sergeant Hutchins, I'll turn it over to you.
Please, or Sergeant Hutchins can answer. What does a desktop training mean?
Tabletop drills are when we give a scenario and then we're talking through it. We may, oftentimes it's used in law enforcement, emergency services for disaster planning, to where we give a scenario and then we talk through what everyone's role is. So we bring in administration, we would sit there, we'd talk about it, and okay, this, this is the principal's role, and they know their role, and they talk through that. And that's how we do our tabletop drills. I won't spend a lot of time, by this point, most of you know what school resource officers do. It's a program obviously that I'm passionate about. Been a resource officer for going on 19 years now, so. And the program's been in Surrey County since the 1990s, when we started with the first SRO at North Surrey High School. But all of our school resource officers are sworn law enforcement officers. They have attended a school resource officer training. The Justice Academy puts it on. It's a basic school that is required. The state mandates that it must be completed one year from the date that the officer is assigned to the school. And then the officer has to do certain trainings that are specific to school resource officers every year. If they don't complete that training, they cannot be, cannot be assigned to a school. So we'll go to the next slide. This just shows you the roles of a school resource officer, and the program is broken down into three sections, law enforcement officer, informal counselor, educator. We really want our officers spending the most time in that law-related educator role or that informal counselor role. The last thing we want to do is have to be the law enforcement officer. Obviously, that is part of our role in keeping students safe. But again, we want to make connections with kids, and we want, we want to see that change for our community. Next slide, please. And this just shows you, just gives you a breakdown of what those responsibilities look like from a law enforcement officer, as far as safety on our campus, law-related counselor. That's when we want our officers in classrooms presenting on various topics. It may be in conjunction with health and PE classes, doing too good for drugs. Or it may be street law, some type of history class where we're talking about Fourth Amendment, search and seizures, those things. Any way we can help the teacher, and it gets us that exposure into the classroom, again, making those connections. The law-related counselor piece of that, that's, a lot of times, those are going to come from referrals from guidance counselors, or they're going to be through school administration. And we're going to work in conjunction with them to make sure that we're getting the services. Sometimes that may be that we're reaching out to DSS. That may be that we're reaching out to Mobile Crisis. Those are different ways that we're going to get involved that way. And then from a high school standpoint, a lot of that is, you know, we may have a kid that gets a speeding ticket. We want that kid to come talk to us about it because we want to be able to reach out and see if there's any way that we can help that kid through that. Because again, we're there to help the student. Next slide, please. And that just shows you our statistics from last year. And that's, I don't know why those numbers are gotten thrown off there. But calls for services and security checks, I wanted you to see the security checks because we're, the sheriff is making sure that our officers are checking our schools. So our elementary, obviously, we have 11 elementary schools. When you look at school, excuse me, you look at security checks, and you see that there are 1,454 security checks. That's because our officers are checking schools daily. That's how many times elementaries were checked for last school year. Obviously, the numbers are going to be lower for the security checks for middle school and high schools because we have officers that are dedicated to those campuses. Hopefully, as we see our elementary SRO numbers go up, we'll see those security checks come down. So the patrol officers are more focused on what's going on in the patrol world. And calls for services, when you break the elementary schools down for calls for services at 175, but you look at that across 11 schools, that's not a lot. But in the same respect, those are times that we probably need an SRO that's assigned to that school handling those issues, rather than occasionally having to have a patrol officer come in and deal with that. Next slide, please. And this, and I'm sorry that those numbers, they were not thrown off when I first did that. That just gives you a breakdown of where our numbers were for elementary schools for last school year, how many instances we dealt with, and I apologize, that was not put together that way. And then the other section of that talks about law-related education. That's showing our piece and how many kids we connected with through various programs that our officers were in the classrooms teaching. And again, that, those elementary school numbers with 158 instances, that just breaks down what we have done with two elementary school resource officers. Next, please. And then we track our officers, and I just used elementary as an example. We, we track our officers and how much time they're spending in each area. And you can tell based on those percentages, the majority of our officers are spending their time doing patrolling, monitoring, and interacting with students. And that's exactly where we want them to be. We don't want them having to spend time on investigations and doing reports and paperwork because again, it's about making connections with those students. And we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive. And I think that completes it for me. We'll go to the next, please.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for Mr. Hutchins? Chad, I've got a question. The so your guys, those statistics were from the elementary school that you used for an example, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And I guess the statistics for the middle school and the high school are a bit more complicated.
That they are. We have those numbers, and I can share that with you. I can email that to you. That's not a problem. What I do think is encouraging to look at is that we look at the trends and when we, or, excuse me, now it's been seven years ago when we put middle school officers in the schools. What we were interested to see is, did the, did that affect the number of instances that were occurring at the high school level? And it has. We have seen the numbers go down at high school because we're interacting with them in middle school, less likely to have a problem in high school.
You talking about behavior? Are you talking about the violation of breaking the law, or drugs, or possession, or what?
All, all of the above, yes. We, as far as for a law enforcement standpoint, I can't speak for the school discipline wise, but from a law enforcement standpoint, we have seen that trend to where it's coming down.
So you've seen the actual incidents start declining?
Based on our numbers, yes, sir.
With the presence of an SRO?
Correct.
Since you've been at this, what, 19 years?
I've been a resource officer 19 years. I've just entered my 26th year in law enforcement.
Okay, and just generally speaking, as a rule, I guess, school, the school safety component and the incidents you folks have to deal with, excuse me, have become a lot more complicated in the last 19 years? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And on the safety piece of it, and I may be speaking out of turn here, but as I've told Dr. Reeves in numerous meetings we've had, hopefully, we will never have an active shooter on our campuses. But the simple fact is, we can put all of our safety measures in place. But if someone wants to get on our campus, they will. Our only chance to stop that is to have someone there that can counter them. So, you
In other words, the best you can do is a pretty sorry job. I mean, just bluntly speaking, I mean, it's like the school bus component of school safety. You know, there's a wide open field there as well, from a safety standpoint, protecting kids on school buses and that sort of thing. Having been in a school system, I'm just curious, for 19 years, doing this, and as we've said, the situations have become a lot more complex and serious. Actually, would serious be a good term?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, based on your observations, what what, what do you attribute that to in our young people today? What, 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 what do you?
Social media is probably the biggest influence.
Pardon me?
Social media has been the biggest influence that, you know, and when we talk about the Say Something app, and we talk about those things, information is just too fluid. And, and we've, we've got to be able to combat that, and our, hopefully through, you know, and we are seeing it through Say Something, the kids are telling us, and we're able to intervene. But yes, that's, that's probably what I attribute most, most of it to within the last several years of social media.
Do you think kids are a little bit more prone to violence now than they were 19 years ago when you started?
Ba, based on national statistics, yes. Yes, and I, and I think that's just because of what they see.
What they see.
And what they have access to.
Most of it is media, social media.
Think that's a lot of it, yes.
Exposure, family life, home life, so.
A lack of
Relation of all, yes. Family unit, yeah. Okay, yeah, it's concerning, you know, I, I keep up with the news quite heavily, and I, I think it's very, I'm just wondering what in the world, and I hear Dr. Reeves talking about, you know, the counselors and the interventions and the programs, and you know, we didn't see any of that when I was in school. I mean, so something has changed in our world, and it's not been for the better, that's for sure.
The whole world has changed.
Yes, sir.
It's a very complex place.
Officer Hutchins, I was on that thought. Thank the good Lord, we've never had an active shooter in any of our schools in your tenure of what, 19 years?
Yes.
As SRO. Have you, I'm just curious, that made me wonder. Have you ever intercepted a weapon, a dangerous weapon, like guns? I know probably pocket knives and something, but a weapon that could have been used for
Yes, sir.
Mass destruction, yes.
Yes, well, I'm with Mr. Goins there. I can't, he could probably tell you the year, but we recovered a pistol off of a student.
Inside the campus?
Yes, yes.
Four years ago.
Yes. Last school year, I would have to look back, we either had three or four reported weapons on campus. And in one of those cases, I know through one of our middle schools, we recovered what looked to be a real gun, was not a real gun thankfully. But it, it resembled one well enough to where if that child had pulled that on a officer, they'd had no other option.
Yeah, understood. Do you?
And we did have a, we recovered a pistol last year on a high school campus.
So, you know, I know this is a whole nother conversation. I don't mean to get off on it tonight, but we, this is a pretty big proposal for force. It's financially huge. It's recurrent. It don't ever go away. It starts, and it looks like to me from the charts I see, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good expense for the county, the taxpayer, the load on our resources already, and it never quits. It recurs next year and next year and next year, and those hours get bigger, not smaller. And those, those And those hours get bigger, not smaller, and those, those uniforms and dogs and pistols and, and equipment and cars and radios have to be replenished every year and probably I, I would go as far as to say, when you put an SRO officer in a school, it's permanent and forever because I can't ever see ever taking one out for any reason. But along those lines, that's not where I'm going. I was just going to throw out there. You was talking about the SRO officer and all the duties that they do here, that's intervention and before the problem happens and that kind of thing, and that, that's wonderful. But if we're talking about on the safety officer side of the responsibility of these new SROs that we're proposing, particularly down on the elementary level, where hopefully they're not carrying pistols quite as often, even though I've read occasions where they do. It ended up in fatalities, believe it or not, but and this is, I don't want to get really sidetracked here, but I mean, have we, has, has your board or your, your, has your department along with the Surrey County Board of Education ever had the discussion of metal detectors? Or those kind of things? As far as keeping out a ma, a pistol or a weapon of mass destruction, a rifle, those kind of things versus the SRO component have, and, and, and if so, what has those conversations concluded?
And I would defer to Dr. Reeves on that. I know that there are current conversations about those things. And obviously, there would be a lot to go into that as well.
So do you have an opinion on what you think about a metal detector versus an SRO or you, we know SROs are good and if, and if it didn't cost anything, I'd want five in every school.
Agree.
Maybe ten, we'd go for ten, starting next week. But you know, at about eighty, eighty thousand dollars a year, whether the state's paying the part of it and we're paying part of it, I mean, when you talk about salary and car and equipment and recurring cost, that's a huge expense. And we're talking about putting a lot of SRO officers that, that I guess in the end would eventually be for, we, our goal is for every school, is that right, Dr. Reeves? Every school, every school. Yeah, this is not your goal tonight, but your long-term goal is after these seven officers that's in our, I believe it's seven that's in my, or you got an option, you got, you got six and then you got up to seven in the package, one of you guys do in the presentation that was in our pack. But the long-term goal is not seven, but one in every school as a minimum. Tonight's just a starting point, I assume, yes. And along those lines, I'm just thinking, well, before we go and start, you know, with a huge number of SRO officers, I think we've already got maybe like nine, is that right? Nine in our schools?
We have a total of eleven counting our dare officer.
So with your supervisor and your dare officer, and then you have seven other active officers, and then we're, that's nine, and then you're asking for seven more tonight, no?
We're only asking for two, maybe three more tonight.
Yeah.
So you see the number six?
Yeah.
Four of those are the current four middle school SROs whose salaries are being paid for through the same grant.
Okay, we'll, okay, we'll get, we'll get into that, thank you, and we'll get into that. But I, I, along those lines, is that the only safety mechanism that we have concluded that'll be effective as an SRO officer? And we absolutely don't look at one way in, one way out, single entry, modifying other schools, it's not under current construction to have them one way in, one way out. Just an officer's perspective, is any of that worth anything for safety to you with metal detection?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think we have to look at all of those things. I think we have to do everything we can to make sure their children are safe. But, you know, I'll go back to what I said earlier that, you know, it's, it's just like with a criminal, if they're going to commit a crime, they're going to find a way to do it. We got to find a way to counter that.
Yep, so you're saying even if we had an SRO officer in every school and a metal detector out front and one way in and one way out, if there was a will, they would find a way to get in and do some harm, in your opinion?
I, I absolutely think that if they wanted to, they would find a way. Unfortunately.
Yep, and that's a sad indictment on our society and it's also did, you know, it's somewhat hard for me to imagine that with that kind of money we're about to embark upon, that we still have a huge, in your opinion, and I believe your opinion is very valuable. Because you're there, you own, you're, you're where the rubber meets the road, you're there in the school every day. But if you believe that the, the gap of safety still exists, even with an SRO officer at every school and maybe even metal detection in, in combination with that, and you still feel like if there's a will, there's a way, that that makes me feel like my, our money is not buying quite as much as I hope it would buy, I guess. But thank you for your honest answers.
As you see here before you, as you mentioned, Vice Chairman Tucker, it would be the desire of the goal to have an SRO at each school, that's a goal. I think schools, we have compulsory attendance. Students are required to be there. And I think from our standpoint, from the Board of Education's standpoint, we feel like we're required to keep them safe. And I think some of the issues that we're seeing, especially with elementary students, are domestic issues between parents that spill over onto campuses that sometimes our teachers and principals are there left to try to figure it out while they're waiting on a deputy to respond. And obviously, that, that can be very concerning. I've mentioned to you, again, looking at future needs, you can see these things, most of the things we've talked about. The last two bullets, obviously, I appreciate the, support the commissioners on purchasing nine additional acres of land behind North Surrey High School. I do have a traffic study that is being conducted by the Department of Transportation, this is an onsite study, got the email last week to begin working on that. So we will have a group of DOT officials to evaluate the traffic at North Surrey High School. I want to thank the sheriff, Chief Deputy Lowe, Sergeant Hutchins, we've added a second deputy at the entrance at North Surrey High School on Highway eighty-nine just this year, and it's been a tremendous asset, just thankful. Of course, you know, we've got Gentry just down the street, so we are evaluating that and that's a big part of safety. We, to your question about metal detectors, Vice Chairman Tucker, the board has had some informal conversations, that's something that we want to, we, we will include that on our next Safety Committee meeting agenda. Is the discussion about metal detectors, and I think there's new technology that really detects facsimiles of weapons on campus where multiple students can walk through at one time. I know there's a couple of schools in the Piedmont Triad that have implemented these, mainly in Guilford County and Forsyth County. I know there's a school out west that's, has them ordered, and so there's a couple of different brands, a couple of different items. I think some of the logistics of implementing something like that, I think about the TSA at the airport, the number of people it takes to get the passengers through the, from point A to point B to point C, obviously, that's, that's something that we would need to consider and be very thoughtful in that.
About the courthouse as well, like we do every day.
Yeah, and so, you know, what, what happens when the metal detector goes off?
Somebody got to go see what.
Yeah, and so, we want to really talk through those things as, as we investigate. So that is on the radar screen. The next slide really outlines our current SRO numbers, and so we have three at the high school. Surrey County Schools pays for those three SROs from our at-risk funds for a total of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That's coming out of our local budget. The four middle school SROs are included in the number, I'm going to show you in just a moment, but four, those four positions are funded through the grant. And you are currently getting thirty-three thousand dollars per position for those four middle school SROs. We currently have two elementary SROs, so we have eleven schools, two slash eleven, so two of the, they, they cover all eleven schools on a rotation basis, and you're funding those positions through the sheriff's budget. So what, and we are also seeking funding from local municipalities, like I mentioned it, from the town of Pilot, to help offset and to help to really spread out the, the cost for these, these SRO officers in our schools. So if you flip over to the next slide, you can see that at the beginning of eighteen nineteen, the grant provided thirty-three thousand dollars per SRO. Because we are a low wealth district, this year's grant has increased the cost of those SROs, and so we are now, for the four middle school SROs, we are getting forty-four thousand dollars per SRO. So essentially, that's a savings to the county of forty-two thousand dollars because we're a low wealth district.
Because we went change to tier one or number two or three, or is that, how do they identify, what's their identification of a low wealth region? Is it based on the tier system?
It is. Tier system and our free and reduced lunch numbers, which are over sixty percent. So that leads me to the spreadsheet with the numbers that you asked for in December. So what you see here, when I see six SROs, just remember the next slide, four of those are already employed and are at each middle school. So in this new grant, we could only apply for middle school and elementary. So we applied for two additional elementary because the four middle school, we had to reapply for those four middle school. So the grant was, we did get the grant for the four middle schools, that's a continuation. We're getting forty-four thousand dollars per position. But we also got two additional elementary positions. So that's where you see the number six.
Under twenty years, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and I see six, you're saying that we already have four of them that was in the twenty, twenty-two year, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wish I'd had you this afternoon when I was reading through.
Okay, sorry, well, it was, I tried to make it as simple as I could, but so you can see the total cost, then you can see the grant amount, we're getting two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars this year. And we're going to get two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars next year. So in year one, an SRO, the cost is seventy-seven thousand dollars. So you'll see there's a twenty-two thousand dollar difference between year one and year two, that's because the two elementary SROs, we're allocating seventy-seven thousand for those two elementary SROs. For the four middle school SROs, we're allocating sixty-six thousand. So, you follow my math?
Yep.
So option one, option two. Now look at the next option where I have the number seven. So, remember I told you we're getting forty-two thousand additional dollars because you're getting the forty-four thousand per SRO? What I've spoken with the Sheriff's Department, and I think they're in full support, is rather than add two elementary SROs, we would like to add three. And you can see the cost breakdown. Use the savings that you're getting from the additional forty-four thousand dollars per SRO on the middle school. And you can see that the average cost of those SROs would be thirty-three thousand dollars a year in year one, and the, then the average would go to twenty-eight thousand dollars in year two. So that would be option, the, where we've got seven SROs, that would add three elementary SROs versus two. Do you follow the math?
All right, breaking all that down, how many SROs do you want to add to additional tonight? Three, that is your request tonight?
I'm requesting three additional SROs tonight.
And those are, I'm following you, but elementary?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
All elementary.
Do we have any more copies of this for Bill and Mark and Larry? These are the ones that Ben and I got this afternoon.
Yeah.
Oh, you got one?
Did you get one packaged? No, I don't think that's the same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah, it's the same information, just in a little, it's got, there's more detail in that.
So, all right, go ahead, I don't want to interrupt you, brother. I was going to ask a couple more questions. First one, I got it. Can I ask a little math question right quick? Forty-four thousands come through the grants per SRO. And so the total cost is, what, seventy-seven? Is that, thanks, is that right?
For a first year SRO, it's seventy-seven thousand, that includes the, the equipment, that's cost for this car,
Oh.
Uniform.
In a sense, you're asking the county for about thirty-two thousand dollars SRO, for each SRO. Is that, is that correct?
Thirty-three in year one, twenty-eight in year two.
Then, then tell me what year three will be, when the state decides what they're going to pay.
That's a great question. If I had a crystal ball, I could tell you, and you know, we don't know.
Question, because I came on this board, I remember the first, when we did the elementary schools, and I've told you this before, just for public consumption, you know, the state came up with like a seventy-two to twenty-three dollars we paid on the SRO office, and I thought, man, this is no brainer, we won't hire one for every school. And just about the time year two or three came along and I was really beginning to enjoy that, just suddenly they switched the ratio, we were paying seventy-three percent, they were paying twenty-seven, they didn't ask us. So my, my angst to all this is, as much as I like this four to one matching grant from the state, and I have some more questions too, but I'm just saying, I wonder when the state will change the script again and suddenly change the ratio around. There is no guarantee that the state of North Carolina will always pay four dollars to everyone that we pay, but once we hire them and put them into effect and assign them to a school, it's going to be hard to ever take one away if, whatever the cost is. I just want to make that point to my board members and everybody here that is, there's no going back. And there's no guarantee going forward on what the state will pay. So I don't want to be too tempted to just go way too far down the road as one commissioner tonight, simply because I do not know to the full extent what the state will be committed to, year two, year three, year four, year five, or if any commitment to top. And I, I think it's fair to point that out because it's going to be incumbent upon Surrey County taxpayer to make sure that all this continues, once those grants perhaps have even gone away. So I say that, and I don't want to get, if you got more presentation, you know, please go ahead, and then I've got a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman.
I do have a, a video at the end, I'd like for you to hear from one of our principals, it's forty-four, forty-five seconds.
This is Blair.
If I were to have an SRO here at Flat Rock Elementary, every day or at least part of the day, what a monumental impact that could have across our whole county. When an SRO has the time to get to know these students, to know their families, know the homes they live in, know the cars they're coming to school in, to really understand what a child needs. If we're able to intervene at an early age and through powerful relationships, this could have an impact across our whole county to better the lives of so many students, even one, what a difference it would make.
Blair Lambert, principal at Flat Rock Elementary School. Vice Chairman Tucker, I totally understand your situation, and if I were in your seat, I'd be asking the same questions. In our seat, we're here protecting, trying to protect our students and staff the best we know how. And we have put a lot of things in place.
Yes, sir, and I think there's one thing we can all agree upon, the education side, that the Sheriff's Department and the Board of Commissioners and the whole public. And that is, we do want our children to get up every morning and go to school, and we want them to go safely and we want them to come home safely that afternoon so we can hug them and feed them and love them and put them into bed and start all over the next day. We all have that same common interest. Unfortunately, our side of the table tonight is how, how we're going to be able to afford this short term and long term, and how many can we afford? And along those lines, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a couple of questions, and that is, how will our approval or disapproval of your request tonight affect the ability to get grant, grant funding from the state of North Carolina this fiscal year between now and June the thirtieth? If we say yes tonight, I'll go, you'll get some grant monies that, that can be spent between now and the end of June, is that what it looks like here? And then, then if we get approved through that period, they will carry over into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, what we're guaranteed tonight,
Yep.
in year one, we're going to get two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from the state for six SRO positions.
Okay.
You can see the total cost, I'm back up on line one of year one, is the total cost is four hundred and eighteen thousand. The grant amount is two sixty-four, that's guaranteed this year. And then there's two hundred and sixty-four thousand guaranteed next year. And you see the total cost is three ninety-six, that's subtracting the, the twenty-two thousand for those two first year SROs, that they then go down to a sixty-six thousand dollar per, per SRO unit, and of course, that includes retirement, that includes health benefits and all those pieces as far as the package goes.
On that same line, there's, at the local cost, I assume that's Surrey County taxpayer cost, that's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
That's correct, and that's, that equals twenty-two thousand dollars per SRO.
Equals how much?
Twenty-two thousand per SRO. Twenty-two thousand per SRO.
That's with the, with the state providing on this particular grant, four dollars to our one dollar. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So that's, it costs us twenty-two thousand dollars to hire them after the grant, after the funding ratio of four state dollars and one county dollar. And that'll be a good deal as long as that lasts, and I'd be willing to hire them and a bunch of them for a long time, if I knew that'd last a long time. I unfortunately predict that will not last a long time. The state doesn't usually do their business that way. And they usually require this counties to have more burden about building jails and man, holding prisoners and paying the cost of some of these initiatives they put out with the little fish hook of the temporary grant funding. And, and I hope that's not the case, but I, I fear it could be. So I guess I'm saying, what is the urgency of our decision tonight? In, in success or failure for your request on these three offers?
So the urgency is the two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars is for this fiscal year that started July one. We didn't receive the grant. We applied in the fall, we received notification in November, came to you in December. So for every day, week, month that we don't have someone in place, then we're going to end up having to send back the difference of that two-sixty-four come the end of this fiscal year in June thirtieth. Does that make sense?
Rewind that again for me.
Okay, so that two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars is for this fiscal year only?
We now the end of June thirtieth.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we don't use it, we lose it.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that part.
Yeah.
You're talking just six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you don't apply for it, you don't hire anybody, you don't spend it, you don't have it, you say you lose it, but you don't lose, what we lose is the ability to hire people and put them into this job between now and June the thirtieth.
That's right.
So if you don't put these people, these three additional officers in this job between now and June the thirtieth, you just, that's just grant funding you won't receive reimbursement for.
That's, that's, that's correct. Nor will we receive the funding for the current four middle school SROs that we already have employed.
So that's tied to this same request?
So if you don't, if you don't do the, the, the two-sixty-four, then the others go away as well, is that right?
Well, they're all tied together. We had to reapply for those four middle school SROs. So they're tied into this grant because it's a two-year grant. I think we're in the third year of the two-year grant. I think, I think we've had those middle school SROs six years.
So when you applied for this grant, that would be, that would allow you to be able to hire three additional officers between now and the end of fiscal year. You applied for it along with the grant funding that we're already getting with our other four SRO officers?
We didn't have a choice.
I understand, so that wasn't optional?
Not, well, we could, we could, I guess we could not have applied. And then you would have to pick up a hundred percent of those four middle school SRO salaries. The grant's paying, obviously here you can see twenty-five thousand in year one.
Just been a whole lot of urgency here. I mean, this is, you know, this is a pretty big deal, and we don't have a lot of time to decide. And, you know, we've got an annual budget request process about to come up, start here next, in the next month. And then we've got a budget process to go through to pass a budget by the end of June. And this is, this is a whole big chunk of something that's not even, we've even had time to study in the budget process.
And it's, it's happening this way across the state because these grants were, were pushed out in November. In fact, Rockingham County is having the same meeting tonight.
Yeah. Sounds to me like state was very crafty on the way they had you to apply for the grant, if I had to comment.
Well, their methodology doesn't work with our budgeting process because, you know, we, we wrap up the thirtieth of June. And, and obviously we start our budget process in February. And so, you know, it falls in the middle of the year. I mean, when, when you start looking at these things. And so, and then, you know, we have to look at the big picture as county commissioners. One question I have, now is this, would this be a request going forward into, in the sheriff's department budget? Or would this be a request in Shreve County School Systems budget?
So I would, I guess I'd have to ask the sheriff. But typically, this has been in the sheriff's budget, not in my budget.
Okay, so it would continue to be in the sheriff's budget? And that, you know, it's, it's just a big thing to wrap your head around. I mean, you know, cost of everything's gone up. And we're trying to manage our financial resources as conservatively as we can. You know, in four years, we've had an increase of twenty-five positions at the sheriff's department. Twenty-five positions at the sheriff's department, that's since December two thousand seventeen. So I guess it's five years that we've had an increase of twenty-five positions there. And, and we've got the jail coming on, and there's some additional requests there, I think, for positions.
Maybe twenty or twenty-one more detention officers is requested also, is that about right, Sheriff?
And then when you put twenty-one detention officers on top of, you know, nine more SROs, that's thirty more people that are on payroll and salary. And you have to pay, you know, the whole getup.
Retirement.
Retirement. And it's, it's, it's a big number. It's, it's a huge, it's a huge tax increase, actually, is what it is.
Right.
So.
Mr. Chairman, what can I ask? You know, it would be nice to have a little time to do due diligence. You know, I hate to, I've been on this board for about eight years. And, and most of the time I ask you, if, you know, if anybody's bleeding out, is anybody going to kill over if we don't decide tonight? I mean, I don't like to have to say yes the first pass. I like to kind of think about it, run it by the finance team, run it by the county manager, do some research on it, see how much it's going to affect our projected fiscal budget coming up. And just how many pennies on the dollar does that affect our tax rate possibly? I mean, money does not grow on trees, and we got to pay for this. And if we say, yep, we're in, we're going to pay this match. I mean, I kind of want to do this. And like I said earlier, if, if it didn't cost much, I'd say just double up and ask for two at every school. I'd be glad to do that. I'd, I'd be glad to do two at least, maybe three, if we could, if we could, if we didn't have to pay that much money. But I guess my last question, or one of my last ones is, if we don't do this tonight, but we do it two weeks from tonight, when we've at least had two weeks to think about it, or four weeks, which we've at least had a month to think about it, what is your timeline on the grant going away?
I would have to look at the details of the grant. That's why I came to you in December. We were trying to get those officers hired then. Of course, we had the technical difficulty in the month of December, and we've delayed to tonight. We were going to do it at the first January meeting, but because we put this presentation together, Chris and I thought it'd be better to just do it tonight, since we meet on the first Monday of the month. I, I think for our standpoint, we're looking, just looking at a delay and trying to get someone hired and someone in our schools. As far as the grant itself, I would just have to review the, the fine print of the grant and potentially give our grant writers a call or folks in Raleigh to understand that.
If we don't do the two tonight, that's what you're asking for, correct?
Three.
Love to have three, but.
But, but you said you settled for two.
Two's what we asked for, three, if you think about the savings you're getting, is not that much.
Question here is, if.
Three is thirty-three thousand, right?
If.
Per year.
The, if we, if we don't do it tonight, then if we don't do these, let me ask, rephrase this. If we don't do these two positions between now and the end of the fiscal year, does the funding, and confirm this, I think you said this, but reconfirm it to me, does the funding for the four SRO middle school officers go away?
We, we will not have that funding for the four middle school SROs. I think the other delay might be just trying to staff those two extra positions and getting those people onboarded. Would that be fair to say?
Do you have them available and ready to go right now if we said, yep, we're approving this tonight?
We would have one pretty, pretty quick.
Yeah. So even if we approved it tonight, you don't have three ready to go. I guess my question is, if we did this a, a month from today, you think, you think we would suffer any pain financially for making, delaying that decision for one month?
Without reading the grant and understanding it in full detail, I don't think so. But I can certainly make a phone call tomorrow and give Chris a call once I have that information.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a question for Sergeant Hutchins. Sergeant Hutchins, if you could answer my question here. These SRO officers, just reconfirm to me, what, what is their actual job when school's out?
When school's out?
What do they do?
We, well, for one, that's our time that our officers get training. When patrol officers are doing it throughout the year, we do it in the summer. As to not pull those officers off of their campus during the school year. Same respect if they have vacation time, we ask them not to take time during the school year. That, the time that they accumulate, that they do that during the summer. We also have some officers who are assigned to different community events, such as Camp Raven knob being one of those, and then community policing. Because, I mean, you're, you're looking at roughly seven to eight weeks that they're not in school. And again, that's the time that we've got to get in service. That's also the time that the annual conference is held for school resource officers, that we try to attend that as well.
Community policing, they never go back into a regular rotation for other assignments at the sheriff's department. They're always just to have their own assignment.
They, they can, they can, because they're all sworn officers.
Last year we had, we had one that did that.
And, and we've, we've done mental commitment transports, we've done detention transports. They're definitely not just sitting around. No.
Well, and I ask that because, you know, these five gentlemen, these other four gentlemen here and myself, you know, we're, we're obligated to be the watchdogs for the Shreve County taxpayer. And the Shreve County taxpayers work hard and pay their taxes. And, and it's our job to make sure that it's, that it's being spent appropriately. And positions that are filled, those people are doing jobs and doing their job. And, and the county, the county taxpayers are getting a benefit from that.
When, when COVID hit, every SRO was assigned to the courthouse because that increased with social distancing. Judge Buckett's request, there were times that we had twelve and fourteen officers working the courthouse. That summer, I'm, I'm not sure that many of our officers actually got to take a vacation because there was the need that we had to be there.
Okay, thank you. All right, gentlemen, what's the consensus here? Commissioner Johnson?
I'd like to ask another question.
Okay.
Dr. Reeves. I, I'll just ask the question first, and I have, I have a few thoughts. Tell me again, for, for, just say, just for each SRO officer, what's it going to cost us for the remainder of the year? And then what would it be for the second year in full? Our part.
Well, so for the four middle school SRO officers, we're committed to their salaries this year, which they're part of this grant. And I'm, just personally, I don't feel like, you know, having to submit a grant to the state every two years for an SRO seems, you know, superintendents across the state, really, that's not something we're in favor of at the state level either because we're in this situation, just like you are, our budget, same fiscal timeframe that your budget is. So I just have to do the math.
Got to work with what we can work with.
Yeah, so, you know, you'd be looking at.
Crystal ball either, so.
You'd be looking at those, those four middle school SROs, their, their salaries for the, for the full fiscal year. And you'd be looking at the two elementary salaries just from the time they start to the end of this fiscal year.
We were already committed to the four that we already have. So what, what does each SRO new ones cost us for the remainder of the year?
For the remainder of the year, each, so you're looking at a total cost of twenty-five thousand dollars per SRO. I'm in option one with six.
Right.
That's, that's your four middle and your two elementary. Guess we just have to prorate that and look at the month by month, calculating those.
That's what you're asking, take you through June the thirtieth, is that right? For, for remainder of this year?
Well, it is a two-year grant, so we're asking for this year plus one more because I think that's stipulations.
We have to do both years, okay?
Yes.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have that simplified for me, if somebody could.
My opinion, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, we've all agreed, we're all about school safety. We want to start last month, last year. But before we take this plunge, of which we cannot back up easily, you know, I'd like to ask for a month, but it seems like, Dr. Reeves, that makes you nervous when I start talking about a month down the road because you're not really sure. I'd like to ask for a month to, for this board to be able to take into consideration the full cost and the full ability to project how we're going to come up with the money in this next budget to pay for this. But if that's just being totally off the mark, and you think that is treacherous and, and very dangerous territory, that we may just lose too much on the other four SRO officers that's already being funded. You know, I might compromise for two weeks, but I'm not ready to, to commit tonight to vote for anything permanent outside of the scope of at least waiting one more commissioners meeting to decide. And I want to check with my county folks to see what their opinion is and let them weigh in on it.
Well, I'll just say this, the next meeting, February sixth, we're going to have the pro-life resolution on the agenda. And I don't think you'll be able to get into this room to find a seat. I think it will be running out the halls and down the stairs and whatever. So probably not going to be a good time to do it at that, at that meeting. Now, if y'all, if, if you all want that to be on the agenda at the next meeting, we'll certainly put it on there and try to dispense with the pro-life resolution at the top of the agenda and get some relief as far as seating goes. I don't.
It's just the principle of reacting the first time you hear it asked at this board. I think I'm looking back in eight years, I've made more mistakes saying yes the first time than I did waiting and waiting to the next meeting and, and thinking about the right answer.
Well, I'm, I'm sure willing to, to put it off a meeting or, or two meetings, whichever one you guys, what? Commissioner Goins?
I'm good with next meeting.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll take this up at the next meeting and give it some more consideration. Commissioner Barrett, you good? Mr. Johnson?
I, I'll go, I, yeah, I, I'll be good with delaying. But I was, I just, I don't, I don't want to regret delaying something inevitable. It's something that's necessary, it should be the highest on our priority or safety for our children. And, and by the way, I have grandchildren that's gone through the county school systems, middle school and high school, we all, and all different ones, Shreve Central, North Shreve. And, and they speak highly of SROs, they're friends, they're buddies, they give high fives. It's a whole lot more, you're talking about the mental stuff and all that thing. So I'm, I'm, I'm gung ho about it, and that's the reason I'm trying to get a figure. As our audit says tonight, we're blessed. And, but we, we, they're right, we don't know what's going to happen with the state, that, all that stuff in two years. But at least we know what's going to happen from now for the next year and a half. That's all, that's all we can know. And we, we have to act on that. You know, we, we can assume what's happened in the past with Raleigh and Washington DC or whatever. But on the local level, I, I just, I don't want to put it off. But I'll, I'll go along with the majority and looking forward to hoping we'll make a decision next meeting.
Okay, we'll have it on the agenda on February sixth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reeves. Thank you. Yes, yes, please.
I have to more, I, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate everything y'all do for us. The partnerships have been amazing. Sheriff Hyatt, we couldn't do this without him. But I think as we've, if we've talked about this, we're, I think it's a, a strong symbol tonight. All five of our board members are here, and I don't think we've ever been together outside of a board member, a board meeting at one place at the same time. There is no more important issue in this county today than screwing our kids. That's my, that's my opinion, and I understand the budget. I'm not sat in your shoes or your seats, but I've worked for the county government, I know how, how it is. But I would like to point out one other thing. Twenty-eight years wearing the uniform of United States Air Force. I do know a little bit about deterrence, and I think if you've got an SRO on campus, you deter some of those things that an individual will see as soft target. And right now, we have, I'm sad to say, nine soft targets in nine middle school, or nine elementary schools. So I believe that would step up. So I'm, I'm hoping that it'll at least some of your mind about, maybe we don't, we're not spending this, maybe we. maybe we spend this money and we still don't get our desire. But I do, I think we do. And I think the other thing is our school climate survey has told us that our parents and our teachers say the number one issue, 37% of our teachers and parents that responded said bullying in our schools is critical. These SROs will help with that. Because they're in there with those kids every day, talking to them, mentoring them, helping them understand they don't have to push other kids around when they can talk it out in a different way. So I think there's multiple levels, mental health and security that we can address with this. So I just want to thank you for listening to us tonight. We'll be back and see you in two weeks. And I believe we'll be okay after, but a little bit later, because we meet that night too. We probably couldn't come and see you until later on, on February 6. Yes, sir.
What three school system and what three campuses were you talking about?
The ones that we have.
I mean, the new ones, where would you put them?
He's referring to the three, if you had your wish list tonight.
They would be on a rotation. We have two now rotating around 11. We would be able to have, working with Pilot Mountain and Dobson, we could potentially have, you saw the number six or seven rotating around 11 campuses versus two rotating around 11 campuses. And we don't want to tell them the schedule because that's a security issue. You tell them when you're going to be there.
I understand.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you coming and all you board members out there, this is a big thing. We all got to work at it together. And again, I will say, I think we've got to take some due process. But we all realize there's nothing much more important than the safety of our children at our schools, thank you.
And as a taxpayer, I appreciate you taking that. And I will say that every one of our board members have kids and grandkids in our school system. So this is of vested interest for us, as you said, I know, so it's important to all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good to see you, Clark, Tony, Ken, TJ. Appreciate y'all's service, what you do. And Sergeant Hutchins, you as well, Sheriff Hyatt, we appreciate you, Larry, what you all do. And we'll all work together to get the job done, thank you. Mr. Wayne Black. DSS Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Wayne, good to see you.
I would make a note, DSS Interim Director.
Well, I saw that word interim there, but I didn't want to cut you short there.
Well, I appreciate that. My pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update about what's happening at Social Services. And I want to talk about some of the main issues that we're facing, some of the challenges that we're facing, what we're trying to do about it. Some of the things the federal government is doing that is impacting us and has and will. And a little bit about some of our plans and goals. And first of all, after I retired from the state in 2018, for about three and a half years, I was aware that there were staffing issues, difficulty in hiring and recruiting from watching TV and things like that. But until I came to work here in July, I had no idea the significance of the lack of employees or lack of candidates for jobs. I began work in June 1st, 1976 in Guilford County DSS. I began supervising people on February 1, 1978. And supervised people all until I retired in November of 2018. So I was responsible for recruiting, selecting, training people. I've never seen a situation where we couldn't even attract candidates with the number of vacancies that we have, not, not all the candidates, just anybody. So I'd like to give you a little bit of an overview of where we are with that in DSS and, and by area. I want to first talk, talk about child welfare, Child Protective Services. Present time, we have 10 investigation assessment workers, positions. We have three vacancies, seven are filled. One of those was filled by someone who had early come over from foster care, transferred. We have two supervisors, one is experienced, one has a little over a year of experience. Foster care, primary planning, we have nine social work positions. At the present time, there are three positions filled and six vacancies. However, two of those positions were filled on January 3rd and January the 9th. Which means they haven't even gotten to state mandated training yet. That means is for about a month, and even now, when you consider their ability to go work on the job, we have eight of nine vacancies in foster care. Where did the staff go? From child welfare. A number of our staff went to private mental health agencies to be care managers. With Medicaid managed care, it requires managers to coordinate care for individuals on Medicaid. North Carolina is expanding managed care in something called tailored care management coming up in April. More with families and children, including child welfare. So agencies are hiring care coordinators. We've lost folks to Surrey Community College, school social work positions, hospital social work positions and others. Again, we will basically interview anybody with a four-year degree, regardless of what it is, with any experience or none. And yet, we don't have applicants to interview for these positions in Child Protective Services and Foster Care. We also have vacant in child welfare, a processing assistant for position, which was reclassed in the budget, which would be a person that would assist with doing the financials, the foster care financials, and this is a very critically important job, to be able to code correctly kids in foster care in order to draw down federal reimbursement where appropriate and not get stuck with a repayment, which sometimes happens if you don't do it right the first time. That position was reclassed in your July budget for this year. And it remains vacant. We thought we had it filled and then that did not work out. It is posted, we've got applicants, we're still trying to do that. Let me talk a little bit about Medicaid and Food Nutrition Services. In Medicaid, we have three vacancies at the present time in our Medicaid and Food Nutrition, I'm looking at them together, units. We have just filled three positions recently, and those folks are in training. Again, the Board of County Commissioners approved two positions in the July budget for this year, two new positions, one Medicaid, one Food Nutrition Services. So in essence, when I look back to when I came in July and then before then, we not only really have not filled those two positions, we haven't even kept the positions that we already had filled. So we've been operating instead of with the need. And I'm going to tell you in just a minute what's happening in Medicaid and Food Nutrition, so you can get a picture of where, exactly where we are. So we, where did these staff go? Where did eligibility workers go? These are folks who require a high school education and some kind of experience in banking or accounting or working with people, because it's an eligibility process heavy into a computer work, stuff like that. Well, one was promoted to a vacant supervisor position because the supervisor was promoted to the vacant program manager position, and that person retired on December 31st. One retired. One went to another county agency. One went into a vacant accounting tech position. She'd been there about two months. And then others went to, I guess, to other locations. Adult services. Just briefly, in terms of where we are there is, this is more stable. However, we have seven social work positions and one person retired December 31st. That just happened to take place while we're in the middle of energy season because right now, the agency is structured so that the adult services unit handles low-income energy assistance and crisis intervention program, which I'll touch on in just a minute as well. That's kind of a burden, but this, this put an extra burden, I think, on the staff. And we tried to get some help from our eligibility workers, even though they are understaffed as well to get through this energy season. So administration. Our business officer, who had been with us about three years, who was responsible for budgeting, accounting, reimbursement and personnel, left, her last day was Friday the 13th, last Friday. She went to another county to take a job that paid as she put it. They gave her an offer she could not refuse. We have one accounting tech, we have three positions. In our administration, well, we actually have fourth county interim director. But anyway, we have the accounting tech who's been there two months, is in training. We have an experienced accounting tech and we have an experienced personnel assistant. Our leadership team for the agency consists of the director. Interim consists of the Economic Services Program Manager, who's been in her job since January 1. Consists of the business officer, the position is vacant, it's advertised closing January 25th. And consists of our Social Work Services Program Manager, who is experienced and stable and holding down the fort, not only being a program manager in child welfare, but also doing adoption studies and foster care cases and doing the financials for foster care reimbursement, so we'd be sure to get the money right and covering other duties to get the work done and, and keep the work going. The one area I'm not talking about tonight is child support. And the reason is, we have a solid unit with little turnover. They've all been there for a long time. It's always been stable as long as I've been around and with a very strong supervisor. What are we doing to account for this? What are we doing about this? First of all, we are, let's talk about foster care. We have children, about 115 is our last number, 110, 115 kids in DSS custody. Placements may be with family members, extended family members. They could be with foster parents, some of them are placed in therapeutic foster homes. Some of them are in psychiatric residential facilities, fitness facilities and other locations. We have about 22 kids in custody that are placed in other counties across the state. And I'm not talking about Forsyth, because we've got some kids there too. But they go from Forest City to Charlotte, Monroe, Albemarle, Leland, wherever that is, somewhere down east. Elon, Burlington, Greensboro, High Point and so forth. But what we've done is we've reinstituted a Vanguard Professional Staffing contract. Vanguard Professional Staffing provides social workers, eligibility workers for county departments of social services. And they utilize former employees, retirees from other departments. They actually utilize current employees of other departments of social services who might do work for a county, another county after hours or weekends. Well, we've been able to do that and starting in December, Vanguard Professional Staffing, and I've seen there are all the resumes for these folks. Like about seven folks that are contracted with us. They're visiting 22 kids across North Carolina and giving us reports, which are mandatory and require that all children in our custody and placement in foster care be visited once per month. If that's not done, North Carolina and Surrey County would face a potential federal fine. So it is, but it's important anyway, regardless of the financials, it is critically important to maintain contact with our kids. They are our kids. I talked with Vanguard this morning about the possibility of they're also having assistance with our kids in placement in Surrey County. And they've got two people in mind, one lives in Yackenville, one lives in Royal Hall. And we're going to be working to identify those cases in Surrey County where they can also assist us. Who's doing this now? The two supervisors, we have two supervisors in foster care that were promoted. They were promoted from social, or case worker, social worker to supervisor within the last three months. That accounted for three, two of those eight of nine vacancies that we had. So they're carrying cases. I mentioned the program manager carrying cases. So what we want to do is get to the point where we can, through our contract, get our kids visited and be supporting them. Train new workers, we've got two, and we've got some interviews on Friday, three potential candidates. Get some folks onboard and trained. And as we get folks onboard and training, we want to assign them, the kids and the families that are in Surrey County first and foremost. And we would get to those kids that are in other counties in North Carolina last. Because if we're paying our worker to go to Forest City, for example, they're getting paid for their time and they're getting paid for their mileage. If Vanguard has a worker that works for an agency right close by there that can visit our child and give us a report, that's less mileage and not the travel time. So we think it's cost effective to do it that way, and that's our game plan. The other thing I wanted to share with you is in terms of foster parent training. We call it deciding together. Our program manager, as well as a former licensing social worker, who last worked for us in September of 2021, are going to be starting a virtual class for foster parents. I think we've got five sets of foster parents, foster adopted parents set up to begin that this Thursday evening. It'll run for seven weeks on Thursday evenings. The person that's helping a program manager do that is an employee of the Health Nutrition Center. And we've worked out with county for that person to be able to, to get paid to work with us just specifically to do this so that we can, can keep the supply of foster adopted parents going. So that's been a tremendous help. And I have called Samantha Ainge to thank her very much for allowing her person. She's still going to work full-time for the Health Nutrition Center, but it's going to be nighttime and maybe weekends preparing to do the MAP classes. Specialization of intake from Medicaid and Food Nutrition Services. Back in 1995 or 96, I think it was, when I was in Yacken County as a director, Food Nutrition Services was, we had intake workers and we had intake workers from Medicaid. Because they're two different programs. Food Nutrition Services is a program that's managed and operated and overseen by the United States Department of Agriculture. Medicaid is a program that is overseen and supervised and managed by the Centers of Health and Human Services, Department of Health and Human Services. And we tried to merge, we had to have, try to have one worker to do both programs. And what happened in those late 90s was that staff got very frustrated because the policies are different. And error rate went up. And so staff, we decided to go back to separate. When I came to Surrey County, staff wanted to try to do this again. We thought, well, maybe we would be better able to do it, and we tried it. And it didn't work because frustration grew, error rate went up. And apparently, I guess the department with NCFAST, the case management system that was supposed to make everything simpler and easier, maybe in some cases it did. We tried it again, and we had, we still have ongoing Medicaid, ongoing adult Medicaid, ongoing family and child Medicaid, separate long-term care workers for nursing home placements and SA, in home, adult care homes. But at intake, we had adult Medicaid and Food Nutrition intake workers. We had family and children's Medicaid and Food Nutrition intake workers. And so after some conversations about this, we decided to go back to having separate Food Nutrition, separate adult Medicaid, separate family and children's Medicaid. The other thing is, we have a great training system set up here in Surrey County for eligibility workers. I was director of division for five and a half years, and I commend Surrey County for having a training system for eligibility workers that I haven't seen anything like, other than maybe Wake County or Mecklenburg or somewhere like that, that's big enough to do it. But anyway, so we have a training team. It's taken six months to train intake workers on Medicaid and Food Nutrition Services. So what we're doing now is we're training Food Nutrition workers and we're training Medicaid workers instead of taking six months before that person can go on the floor and do work. It takes three months. And so we're able to get them trained in one program and put them on the floor. You're training this worker and this program, and you're putting them on the floor. Now, we will coordinate together so we can make it as seamless as possible for our applicants. A lot of our applications now are coming online. They're coming through phone applications, which is temporarily approved by the federal partners. Hopefully, it will continue. So this, I think, this will help. So this, I think, this will help with specialization in terms of that. Other actions. Well, in order to keep the bases covered, the adult services supervisor and the child support supervisor are reporting directly to the interim director. Energy, and that includes energy programs. The, with our business officer being gone, the two accounting techs and the personnel assistant will report to the interim director. We have a local business liaison from the state, and by the way, they've got two vacancies out of six positions. For our local business liaisons to advise counties and train and coach on accounting and budgeting and those sorts of things. But beyond that, I was informed on a Children's Services Committee call the other day. The state has twenty-one full-time equivalent positions to provide consultation and answer questions for county departments of social services and child protective services and foster care and adoptions, twenty-one positions. Question was asked by a director, how come your consultant that comes to our county does not read records anymore? The answer was that they only have nine positions filled out of the twenty-one F T Es to provide support to counties in terms of supporting their staff in child welfare. So, anyway. So the budget, I will touch on this now, I won't talk about it later. It was my practice whenever I was a director that I officially, as a rite of passage, began the budget process on February one. Because it's time to get ready to do the budget, because we usually do around the end of March, and February one is my birthday. So what a way to celebrate your birthday after twenty-five years as a director, I guess. Then on February first with doing the budget for DSS. I actually did the budget myself in nineteen ninety-one, when I was director in Yacken County, because the director who retired had done the budget. And so I did it using ten by sixteen pieces of paper with five number two pencils in the conference room because you had to erase things and do it as you went. So I learned to do the budget in nineteen ninety-one. That was thirty-two years ago. I've always had a person who was there to do the budget since then. So hopefully our accounting tech with two months' experience will get some support from our state person with my help and support and actually doing what to put in the budget. We will get the budget done on time. Now, let me, let me talk a little bit about placement, resource challenges. Since I came here on July one, we have had four situations where children, young adults in foster, in our custody, in DSS custody, have spent one or more nights sleeping in our office. This requires us to have, if they're in school, we pick them to school, take, bring them home. Commissioner Marion is aware of this because we talked about this in Community Child Protection Team. And by the way, we almost had another one tonight. But our team was able to work together. I, I did some strong advocacy with, with the hospital to, to not discharge a child tonight. And I called in some, I think IOUs with communication to the State Director of Social Services, the State Director of Child Welfare, and the State Director of Medicaid, to get some help locating resources. But anyway, when we do that, and that includes weekends, then we have to have a shift of two people each shift at night. If it's on a weeknight, then we may have a kid in school, a kid comes home, somebody's got to watch the kid during the day until five o'clock. Then we have a shift of people, two people between five and midnight, and a shift of two more people between midnight and eight A M. Now, these are people that, remember my data on vacancies? These are people that are already covering their work. Now, I will say this, we have got a great team at DSS. And we had volunteers to do this tonight, within thirty minutes, may say we might need them, okay? So, we have to, we have to do that. So, we've taken, we've had folks from child welfare, we've had folks from adult services in other areas of the agency that have volunteered and done this. But let, let me, let me, let me point out, why are these kids there? These are young adults, these are youth in our custody with serious behavioral emotional problems. These are kids who cannot go to a regular foster home or a therapeutic foster home. These are kids who need a psychiatric, we call it P R T F, psychiatric residential treatment facility. And there are only so many of those in the state. We are dependent on the, on Partners Behavioral Healthcare to try to work to identify, locate, work with admissions on it. And we do a lot of that work at appropriate facilities and get those kids approved by that facility to go and be admitted. We have, also the hospital has had one situation where they had a kid discharged and kept the kid for about two to three weeks, because they're required by statute to do that until an appropriate P R T F is found. And we did. We actually have, and I want to just say this, the Children's Center of Surrey is, is a blessing and a real valuable asset in Surrey County. Because I was on the phone with Robin Testerman at ten thirty on Friday night, we thought we were going to have a placement then. Trying to work it out, and it turned out we did not. But they were willing to make us some arrangements. We have a bed there, it's filled. But they work with us very, very well. I would add, as I mentioned at our meeting. Children's Center of Surrey operates a group home here in Dobson. They also operate a group home in Yacken County. That group home, when I was in Yacken, was actually operated by the Department of Social Services. The Yacken County Group Home for Children's Services, for the Children's Center of Surrey, is closed temporarily because lack of ability to find staff to man the facility. So that's another challenge that we have. We have one young person that was discharged from a crisis bed in Richmond County. I believe it's Richmond County. And we had to transport that child to a, the only available P R T F that partners in the state together could find, and that was in South Alabama. And we had to send three workers on that venture to come back the next evening. Left at four o'clock, I think in the morning, to get the kid in order to get down there and then get back the next evening, probably about seven, eight o'clock. We have two kids that have been placed in a P R T F in Petersburg, Virginia, which I think is near Richmond. Again, we were glad to find a placement anywhere as opposed to our office. The number one priority. Every time I tune into a director's board meeting online. And ever since I've come here in July, I've tuned into every one of them. The number one priority of DSS directors is for the state of North Carolina to do something to find appropriate resources to place children that are staying at DSS. In a nine-month period last year, the Directors Association did a survey. And over three hundred and twenty-five kids were cared for in a DSS in North Carolina in a nine-month period. I saw on W R A L where Wake County Commissioners, I'm not asking for a dime, I just want you to know that. Wake County Commissioners approved two million dollars for a facility to house children that were being kept at the DSS or in hospitals. Cumberland County has a unit of staff that does nothing but sit with children at DSS for whom there's nowhere to go. Kids in foster care. I talked to the director in Richmond County, they built in bath facilities, shower facilities at their DSS in order to accommodate kids that stay there. So this is number one priority of the Director's Association. I think it needs to be a priority of the County Commissioners Association. Until, until there is enough advocacy, it's not, it's not going to get any better. Okay, is there any questions about that?
We reserve some permanent beds at our local adoption facility of children's home. Is it two beds we reserve permanently and, or just one?
One here, yes. Yeah. Let me talk a little bit about something.
The P T R C.
Psychiatric residential treatment facilities, right?
Okay. If, if the state did appropriate money for that, would, would they be able to find staffing for it? I mean.
Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. I, I think that's a good question. Now, I would add something else. I remember talking to some directors and they were feeling like it was going to take a lawsuit to get something done about it. I mean, again, we're, we're keeping kids at the DSS with social workers who are not trained in mental health or behavioral healthcare or all the issues that we're facing with kids who can't go even to a treatment facility. Where they have specialized staff trained, right? They have to go to a psychiatric facility. There's a lawsuit pending now against the state by Disability Rights North Carolina. But what they are saying is that the state is inappropriately placing children with behavioral health issues in psychiatric residential treatment facilities, and that the state needs to appropriate the funds for the care of these kids to be cared for in the homes and in the community. And we would love for that to happen if there were resources in the community to provide the services to these kids. The other thing I would add, as a shock to me coming back here, is the number of kids with severe psychiatric problems. And I think some of the earlier conversation tonight is, is just indicative in a post-COVID era of the things that we're seeing that, I think, Mr. Chairman, as one of you mentioned, it, things have changed, not for the good. Now, let me change gears just a little bit, and I'll try to be quick. Economic services programs. In March of twenty twenty, with COVID, the Centers for, the Centers for Disease Control, the Department, Federal Department of Health and Human Services, declared an emergency, a public health emergency. Two things were done. One, they mandated that no one who was a Medicaid recipient at that time could be terminated from Medicaid, even if their eligibility changed. So since March of twenty twenty, and this will run probably until April, actually probably till June. All Medicaid recipients who were getting Medicaid in March of twenty twenty, and all of those who came on board as eligible for Medicaid since then have remained eligible for Medicaid. We've, they've simply extended it for a year at a time. The other thing that was done for food nutrition services. Let's say a family of three has some employment income. They, based on current numbers, would get, say they get two hundred and thirty dollars a month in food nutrition benefits on their A B T card between the third and the twenty-first of the month, based on the last digit of their social security card on odd days. Effective March of twenty twenty, all food nutrition services households, as long as they're eligible, have been getting a supplement at the end of the month. The supplement is equal to the maximum amount for the household size minus the amount of food nutrition benefits that the household is eligible for based on income. So let's take our example, our household of three. It's two hundred and thirty dollars of food nutrition services benefits on February of twenty twenty. Based on the maximum for a household size of three and food nutrition benefits is seven hundred and thirty dollars. So that household has been, would have been getting, continued to get, an additional five hundred dollars in food nutrition services benefits between the twenty-fifth and the end of the month, for a total of seven hundred and thirty dollars. As long as they're eligible, they get the maximum amount for the household. Households that have no income and would have been getting the seven hundred and thirty dollars for a family of three are receiving a supplement of ninety-five dollars at the end of each month since March of twenty twenty. This will be coming to an end in both situations. First of all, the, the Budget Act that was passed and signed by the President on December twenty-ninth had extended the federal budget through September thirtieth for this federal fiscal year. De-linked those two programs from the federal public health emergency. So that they will be phased out. So food nutrition recipients, I'll start with Medicaid. Medicaid recipients, we will have to go back. Let me back up. We already do recertifications. We already get information and do reviews when they come up. So they're a year, so each month we have like one twelfth of the folks come up for review. But regardless of their eligibility, once we've done the review, we push that button and extend it, and have been. Starting probably with June's reviews, we will be actually determining eligibility, meaning that if they're not eligible, they'll be terminated at the end of June. Medicaid caseload. In February of twenty nineteen, there were eighteen thousand and twenty-eight recipients of Medicaid in Surrey County. On December, at the end of December twenty twenty-two, there were twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty Medicaid recipients in Surrey County. That is an increase of six thousand two hundred and twenty-two, or thirty-five percent in three years. Food Nutrition Services, that number has increased to about sixty-six hundred households with about a twenty percent increase in three years. I guess twenty nineteen to be four years. So with food nutrition services, those supplemental benefits end on February the twenty-eighth. Starting on March one, those households will get the benefits that they're eligible for based on income. If it's two hundred and thirty dollars, it's two hundred and thirty dollars. They won't get the five hundred. Lots of information is being sent out by the state to advertise, to inform people about this. We're going to probably work with Surrey on the go, and our resources here, probably going to have a meeting with our nonprofit agencies like Tricantico Christian Crisis Ministry and Salvation Army and folks like that to provide food assistance to people. Here in Dobson, we have one, just to let them know that there may be people coming to them. Now theoretically, you would say, well, why should people be coming to them because they would be getting the food nutrition benefits they would have been getting anyway, had it not been for the COVID change. And there was an increase in benefits on October one, based upon the cost of living for food purchases. But nevertheless, that's what we will be, we'll be doing. What's the impact of this going to be on Surrey County? Okay. Last year, we averaged three point four million per month in Surrey County. Three point four million dollars in food nutrition benefits to the sixty-six hundred households getting food stamps. Of that total, two million dollars, approximately two million dollars was regular food nutrition service benefits that would continue past February twenty-eighth. Approximately one point four million dollars per month was supplemental benefits that have been taking place since March of twenty twenty. That will stop effective March of twenty twenty-three. If you annualize that, that's going to be a reduction in food nutrition benefits to our households of sixteen point eight million dollars per year. In North Carolina, the total amount of supplements in November was a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. Annualized across the state, that would be a reduction of two billion and sixteen million in food nutrition benefits to households in a year. Now, households that have employment and then get the maximum amount, I'm getting, go back to my family of three. They can spend all of that money on food. They probably spend less of the money they earn on food and probably spend that money on other things. My prediction is to fall. One's a prediction, the other is a question. My prediction is that people will, on food nutrition, these sixty-six hundred households will have to go back to spending part of their earned income on food and not on other things. This will be across the state. There are thirty-three states in the country right now that have this supplemental benefits in place. This might have a chilling effect on the economy. This might lower inflation if there's less purchases of goods and services. What I really wonder, will this have an impact on people deciding they know they need to go get a job? Theoretically, you would say, well, you know, if you're going to get the maximum amount for household size, there's no disincentive for making more money, as long as you're still eligible, a hundred and thirty percent of federal poverty level. But, you know, maybe people have learned to live on. Not live on food nutrition, I've not seen you can do that. But back in graduate school, I remember studying the law of unintended consequences and large solutions and federal policy. So I wonder what the unintended consequences are in people looking for work. I don't know if we're going to get more social worker applications. We might get more eligibility applications. But at the at the end of the day, this will have an impact perhaps.
But it's it's going to make people more accountable.
And it should.
It and and it from the work ethic and general contributing to society and contributing to the economy. And that's that's the way our system is supposed to work.
And again, let me reiterate, these folks that are going to get notices about the reduction may call me. They may call you. They may complain, but you know, and I know, and we're assuring them this, we did not do this. You did not do this. The state did not do this. Federal government give us and the federal government is taking it away. And so that's what's happening. Energy program is just a quick thing there. We have $300,000 appropriated for crisis intervention for heating emergencies and we have spent it. Federal funds. We have $541,000 appropriated for the low-income energy assistance program, which is a one-time payment to eligible households. It started out 16 over in December and now everybody can apply January 1, January 2, 3. That has all been appropriate or obligated. So we're out of money in that regard. So again, we're going to be advising our nonprofit agencies of that. When when we get down to plans and goals, I don't really want to talk about anything but one thing. And that is Medicaid expansion in North Carolina, and then I'm going to conclude. We I think it was predicted that in the short session of the General Assembly in 2022, that the General Assembly would approve Medicaid expansion. And that did not happen. Then we were told, and we were gathering data back in November because we were told that it was likely that the General Assembly in a mini-session in November would approve Medicaid expansion, and that did not happen. The prognosticators that I'll listen to are saying that it is likely that the General Assembly will approve Medicaid expansion in the long session. What we don't know is whether they'll approve it as a standalone bill early in the session or as a part of the budget package that would then be negotiated with the governor that might be a part of the leveraging as far as that negotiation is concerned. Once that is approved, if it is approved, then the federal department, I mean, the Department of Health and Human Services in Raleigh will be working with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services in Washington to negotiate the implementation in North Carolina, which would probably take three months or so after it's officially approved and signed by the governor. The projection that we have, and this is two years old data, is that I remember I said we're 24,000 recipients of Medicaid right now in Surrey County. But this would add between 5,000 and 6,000 additional Medicaid recipients in Surry County. That's the latest projection. We have provided, the director's app, is that Director's Association is advocating for the state to pick up the total non-federal share of the calls for staff to implement Medicaid expansion. The state's going to benefit, hospitals are going to benefit, medical providers going to benefit. And nobody's going to benefit, nobody's going to get Medicaid to go pay the pharmacy, the doctor, the hospital, or anybody else until we, DSS, approve that individual for Medicaid. It's 75%, for the most part, 75% federal reimbursement. So we are counting on the state and the General Assembly with appropriation for the counties so that the counties do not bear any other responsibility for the calls to staff and supervision to implement Medicaid expansion in North Carolina. And I would imagine that's also a priority of the County Commissioners Association. We project that we may need four additional staff and a portion of a supervisor based on the estimates, which I say are only estimates and they were done, I think, two years ago. We've asked the state to come up with revised estimates. Questions?
Did you say we have 24,000?
Recipients of Medicaid.
On Medicaid right now, and we have about 72,500 citizens. So so we have about a third of them, third of our population on Medicaid right now currently. Can you anticipate North Carolina changing the Medicaid eligibility or what they call Medicaid expansion to change that number to five additional thousand, which would be almost 30,000 people on Medicaid in Surrey County, you predict?
Well, the projection that we'd have is 5,000 to 6,000 new recipients, so.
6,000 plus 24 is about 30,000 people out of 72,500. Are those people legal citizens?
Yes, they would have to be citizens, yes.
So 30,000 out of 72,500, if Medicaid expands in North Carolina, that's that's astounding.
That's the children of an illegal alien can be eligible for.
If a child is born in the United States, that child is a citizen and would be eligible. If that child is not born in the United States, that child is not eligible for Medicaid.
Is that full of Medicaid eligibility? I mean, like, they qualify for anything that Medicaid? Is it conditional? I mean, will it buy whatever Medicaid will provide?
They'd have to be eligible for Medicaid. Right now, you're eligible for Medicaid based on income for families with children, low-income families with children, disabled adults who have been approved disabled through Social Security Administration.
Regardless of income?
Well, no, there's still an income limit. There's an income limit on Medicaid. It's different from Medicare. Medicare will get 66, 65, you get Medicare. Medicaid is means tested.
Surely severely damage the infant at birth. Is there any kind of instant Medicaid eligibility for that person regardless?
That child could be determined eligible for Medicaid, yes. There are children on Medicaid. The other thing would be that we believe that most of these, again, Medicaid already covers low-income families with children. It already covers disabled adults and some children. It already covers older adults, income eligible over 65. We think that this will primarily be single adults that are low-income. I mean, these could be working, low-income, working individuals who would still qualify for Medicaid because there's still an income limit. So that would probably be most of the new candidates for eligibility, we think.
30,000.
Chairman, that's all I have.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Sergeant Hutchins, and I often wonder about this. You talk about the problems with children. That's what we deal with, the DSS, in a big way, is 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 children and children that are suffering and all sorts of problems that we face. What what do you see is the primary driver of the problems, the kids going into foster care? You know, the all the associated problems that we have at DSS as a county. What what do you see is the biggest driver of this?
Well, I think the children coming into custody is driven by children that are at risk of abuse and neglect that we would find that the parent or parents are unable to protect them from abuse or neglect. Okay, they would not be in a stable home if they remained with a parent. So it's abuse and neglect. And or situations where as we try to work with families and with parents to ameliorate the conditions that led to the report and the information about neglect and abuse that they were not able to successfully solve their drug issue or domestic violence issue or or supervision issue. If I were to give you three, three reasons of why this is happening, I think it's really dysfunctional families, situations. And if I were to give you the top three reasons, I would say drugs, drugs, and drugs. That is, is what we see. Domestic violence is also involved there. And when I, let me ask you, let me tell you something here, just some statistics that I remember. When I came here in 2003, we had 28 kids in DSS custody. Now, that was the low number. It was went up higher than that. When I left here 10 years ago, we had 65 kids in DSS custody. Most recently, we had 115 kids in DSS custody, but it has been, I think, much higher than that. You gave the population figures, Commissioner Tucker. The population has stayed about the same, but the number of kids in foster care has gone up significantly. Okay? I think that tells us the story about what we're seeing with families. We haven't changed the rules, regulations, and the criteria around what is child abuse and neglect or anything like that. So I think I think that's what's happening there. I think there's a significant need for mental health and substance abuse services. I think there's a significant need for resources here in the local community. Maybe there's some help coming in the in the form of some federal legislation that will be enacted in North Carolina to boost what's called home builders, which is intensive family preservation and working with families where children are at significant risk of removal to try to prevent that. Parents as teachers is another expansion that's coming, I think, in the state that they're going to be working using federal funds to do. So hopefully, the goal, my goal would be to keep more children with their families. My goal would be to have stronger parents. My goal would be to have more children in our community and not placed across states.
Just going to ask a question. You you've done a wonderful job with a lot of statistics, some astounding to me. You said you gave the example of nine, 21 state employees overseeing 100 county DSS's case management or?
That's program consultants, right?
Program consultants.
They have trainers and and folks like that that.
You gave an example of Yadkin County Children's Home closed due to insufficient staffing, and you you talked at length about our staffing shortages and particularly in a couple of departments here in our Surrey County DSS. I guess my only question is, how do you think that Surrey County compares to surrounding counties? And our staffing insufficiencies in these same departments compared to our peer counties, our contiguous geographical counties? Are we doing about the same as most other counties? Are we a lot worse? Are we about in the middle? Are we doing better than some? Is this is this catastrophic across the state of North Carolina, about like you described our conditions here in Surrey County?
It is for the most part across the state of North Carolina. The counties that I'm aware of that don't have problems, particularly the ones that have schools of social work or universities like in Greensboro, UNCG, A and T has schools of social work. East Carolina, Appalachian, you know, those those kind of places. I know that in Forsyth County, I heard statistics there, they had 38 Child Protective Services workers and 19 vacancies, and that was a couple of months ago. I think it goes up and down. I think it ebbs and flows. I think right now, in terms of foster care, we are, we're in a, we're in a tough spot. And I think that is uncharacteristics of counties around us. But hopefully, we'll be getting better. Child Protective Services. Again, we have had vacancies the entire last year in CPS. We actually get more applicants in foster care, even though we had more folks leave. We do get some applicants in foster care and very few in Child Protective Services. It's a tough job. You have to rotate being on call. You have to go out at night. Have to go out on weekends, take the beeper. If there's a call, it has to be done at that time. There's there's no such thing as an eight to five job in child welfare. And it's tough, and a lot of folks, I think, are, maybe they don't want to do that.
I can understand it.
Okay, gentlemen, y'all have anything? You good?
Good information. Thank you so much for serving Surrey County.
It's my pleasure to be here.
Wayne, I think you being State Director for five years and then coming back here at a moment in time that there appears to be multiple crises across, you know, our state and and our nation. I think we were very fortunate to have you, and I wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Well, I guess the next time Sandy Snow calls me while I'm mowing over here, it's 90 degrees outside and I'm taking a break and I answer my cell phone, I might go, Surrey County Government, what's?
Not going to take that one.
One thing I will say is I am glad to be able to say I'm going to end my career in Surrey County instead of saying I ended my career working for the state, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you for the time you serve.
I'm calling a five-minute break. Chris Knopf, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is really informational, of course, answer any questions you may have, but as you know, since early last year, staff's been working on the modernization of the county's land use codes to comply with the new, relatively new, uh, chapter, the general statutes, one sixty D, as well as make some other needed changes that were, um, overdue. Included in your packet is a, a schedule um, for the review comment and ultimately adoption of this new code. On January ninth, a public notice wa- was released, uh, which you have a copy of here requesting public comment on the new code or new draft code, I should say. On January twenty-sixth and the thirty-first, we'll be hosting, uh, in-person public input sessions. These will be drop-in sessions from four to seven thirty. They'll be held at the Surrey County Service Center here in Dobson, which is at nine fifteen East Atkin Street. From February first through the seventeenth, any feedback received will be considered and potentially incorporated uh, in, in, into the, um, excuse me, will be considered and will incorporate data gathered during the input sessions or by email. We will accept comments on the new code by email. On February the twenty-second, which is the county commissioner's retreat, some significant time during the retreat will be reserved for a presentation to this board about the, the new code in detail. On March thirteenth, the draft code will be presented to the planning board, and then a public hearing will be scheduled before the county commissioners on March twentieth. At that point or any date after that, the county commissioners can consider adopting the new code. The, there is a place, uh, a page on the county website, which you can find a link to on the main page with a draft of the new code, a summary, a draft summary sheet, which is seven or eight pages long, will be also uploaded this week uh, for anyone looking for more of a, a Cliff Notes version. But we would encourage anyone in the public who, who feels they would have something to contribute to what we're considering here to attend one of the public input sessions. If you're unable to do that, we will accept comments by email. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just want to make sure the board was aware, and I would invite you to attend one or both of those sessions.
Okay, uh, Chris, call those dates out again for those sessions, if you would.
First one is Thursday, January twenty-sixth. That's from four to seven thirty in the afternoon and evening. The second is Tuesday, January thirty-first. That is also from four to seven thirty in the afternoon and evening, and they're drop-in style. So mi- members of the public can drop in at any point during that timeframe.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, how else, other than our website and all that, would, can we advertise it other ways to make sure the public's aware?
It's been sent to the media. I believe Nathan did that early last week.
Okay.
It's also, uh, going to be included on the Surrey On The Go. It's been sent to both chambers of commerce, the Economic Development Partnership, for them to distribute to their membership lists. Uh, that's typically in the past how we've gotten it out.
Good deal.
I believe Marty's also sent it out to all of the stakeholders that the planning department deals with, surveyors, developers, th- folks of that nature.
Good, good. Thank you.
It i- it is on the digital side. It's been on there for a week now. Okay. Any questions? Any further questions? If not, second item I have is a request from Surrey Community College related to Surrey Yadkin Works. Uh, as you know, that program this year sort of exploded for them. A number of new businesses and industries in the county, as well as governmental en- entities are taking advantage of this, uh, internship or apprenticeship program. Next fiscal year, you're going to see the college, instead of requesting two hundred thousand dollars from county commissioners for annual allocation, they're going to request two hundred and eighty thousand. However, due to the number of interns they've taken on in the current, uh, semester that just started, they need to hire an additional employee to help manage the number of interns that they are, uh, supervising. Uh, last week, sat down with the Dr. Shockley, and the request to complete this fiscal year would be an additional thirty-three thousand, and that's above the two hundred thousand that's already budgeted. If the board wanted to entertain this, this evening, uh, we would recommend that the funding come from general fund contingency.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Jack can contribute to this program?
They contribute, uh, one hundred thousand.
Are they asking them to contribute to this position as well?
I asked that question. He said that the, uh, influx of new interns, additional interns are primarily from Surrey County.
You're, you're talking thirty-three thousand to finish the year off?
Finish the current fiscal year. And they'll request an additional eighty thousand for next fiscal year in its entirety.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that, uh, Surrey Yadkin Works is probably one of, if not the best programs we have implemented for our young folks, Surrey and Yadkin. And a big shout out to all the businesses that have participated in this program. Yeah, I'm on, I'm on that board and, um, we really didn't expect for it to grow like it has, but, uh, we, we weren't prepared and, uh, we've got to, we've got to play catch-up now. And, uh, you know, it's, it's kudos to our, our young folks, the high schools and our businesses that, uh, training them, keeping them here in Surrey County. That's the biggest thing, retention. So I, anything that we can do to help with their, Surrey Yadkin Works, uh, this don't seem like a too big of a request. Uh, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Marion, anyone else?
I think Surrey Yadkin Works is something that is working. Uh, it's evident. It's been working. It's been one of the most successful programs. We're retaining and employing people that are homegrown that I've seen in a long time and, uh, you guys are, that are closer to the organization, believe that it's warranted to do an early allocation, then I might break my own principles and say no, the first time I've heard it asked, so.
I'd like to say one more thing. Uh, you know, um, since its inception, Crystal Folder Hawks at the college has really, really done an outstanding job. And Dr. David Shockley, gotta give him a big shout out too, and they've, uh, they've really worked hard and worked together with, with the county, counties to, uh, promote this program, so I just wanted to give them a shout out too.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we supply thirty-three thousand dollars out of general fund contingency to, for them to hire an additional employee, uh, for Surrey Yadkin Works.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Marion, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I would ask the board this time to amend my agenda to include two late items. Uh, one is an offer for a recently surplus property, and the other is related to the, um, grant-funded, uh, garage structure for the health department's trailer and vehicle.
Motion to amend the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Tucker, second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, the first item, and I wrote, uh, each of your spots laid a couple of additional, uh, pieces of information. The first one is a memorandum to the board from Miranda Jones, the purchasing agent, uh, related to tax parcel four nine nine six zero five one seven eight eight four nine. Uh, this was recently, um, surplus, uh, actually on October the seventeenth last year. As per the board's request, finance did send out letters to adjoining property owners. Uh, and based on that, um, outreach on January thirteenth, an offer of five hundred dollars uh, was, um, made for the Walk Street property. There was a contingency that we get the property, uh, verified and surveyed, so the actual corners are, um, evident. Uh, one of the adjoining landowners would like to expand, um, the ability for large vehicles to navigate the property in question. Um, this property, from best we can tell, is a very small tract of land that the county has owned going back to the mid eighteen hundreds. Um, it is, for the most part, landlocked. I believe there is an old, deeded, uh, unopened right-of-way that accesses the property. However, it's just never been developed. Um, the estimated tax value of the parcel is eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
So it is a partial on the GIS?
It is.
This isn't something that was lost to time? We've actually known about this and, and it's on the GIS and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How, what is the, um, uh, is it a tenth of acre or what is it?
Give me just a moment. I'm gonna pull that up. It's simply listed as one lot because it is been in county ownership for so long. However, if you look at the property in comparison to others around it, it's probably going to be somewhere around a quarter of an acre or less.
And along with that five hundred dollar offer, it says it's contingent upon property lines being verified. Does that mean a surveyor at the county's expense?
Yes, that's, that's how I take that.
Well, I'm gonna go back to my principles. I'm saying no the first time I've heard it asked, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Commissioner Marion, this is your district. Of course, it's county-owned land, so it's all pertinent to all of us, but, uh.
Valued at eighty-five, ninety-five, that seems to be pretty low.
Um, I'm in agreement, and, um, county having to pay the fees, we wouldn't realize anything off this, so, um, we'll move on. All right. Is that all you have?
No, I have one other.
Of one other item, yeah.
Sorry. Um, in front of you is another pack of information. On top is a resolution for you to consider. This is similar to what the Airport Authority Board took up last Thursday, and of course Marty Needham's here to answer any questions, but we have located a, uh, spot on the service center property where a permanent structure can be, um, uh, placed to provide the health department, uh, the sheltered, shelter that they've received a grant for, for their trailer and their, uh, truck to pull the trailer. Uh, because of the, there's a slope involved, uh, with this location, and because of that, we're going to need a structural engineer to provide some plans, uh, for the permitting process. As a result of that, because of the size of the project and the, there's also a very tight timeline here. According to the health director, by April, we need to have these funds expended, so getting this building constructed is going to be a challenge. However, that's a timeline that's been dictated by the granting agency. Because of that, we need to move quickly. Uh, there are very few structural engineers in our area, and so we want to contract with the one from Mount Erie Moren Associates, uh, to provide, uh, this service. This, um, exemption, uh, would allow the county commissioners to, um, bypass typical, um, design services, uh, requirements, and select someone as long as the estimated fee is below fifty thousand dollars. For this particular, um, project, Marty, what is that number? Thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for these services. Uh, the location specifically on the service center, um, property would be behind the service center proper, uh, on the edge of the parking lot in the area, um, that is now, for the most part, grass. Um, as, as you know, there is a slope between the edge of the, the parking lot and the, uh, uh, southbound ramp that comes up to, uh, Atkin Street. And this, uh, building will be placed in that general area, so it will not eat up any of the existing parking lot uh, with the exception of the area where it'll be, where it will be accessed.
Opposite corner of cooperative extensions building.
It will be a soil and waters building over there. It will be behind it, but it will not restrict access to that building.
In fact, I think I understood that possibly we had to get some permission from DOT.
Oh.
Possibly. I'm, I, I think I heard that.
Marty had, uh, local surveyor mark the right-of-way line, so we are familiar with where that is now. And this building will meet all of the zoning setback requirements.
Okay.
Down at Dobson as well.
Stay off the right of way.
And we'll be outside the right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that to expedite the ability to utilize the grant funding available, uh, that we passed the resolution exempting Surrey County Health and Nutrition Vehicle Garage from General Statute one four three dash six four point three one.
I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second? Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all I have this evening. Do we have a closed session for legal, yep, closed session or quick?
Okay, um, before I start with my general county business, gentlemen, uh, I'll start with Mr. Johnson over here. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything to note?
I, I'd just like to say I am very pleased with tonight's meetings, especially with our, all of our Eagle Scouts coming in. I, I think it's probably about six different troops, I think. I was just so tickled to have, have that many. I, I, that's probably the most we've had at one time. So pleased with that, and also, uh, for the sheriff's department and the county school board who come in with their, uh, request and all the information they shared with us is very informative. Uh, looking forward to, uh, having more discussion on that. And I, I really was impressed with Wayne Black's presentation tonight. Uh, it, it really done me, it done me some good to hear, uh, the actual facts and figures and all of the different things we have, and I just, uh, just thankful that, uh, we, we got what we got, how blessed we are in Surrey County. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Tucker?
Uh, very short. Uh, thank, would like to thank everybody that's coming. Most of them have already gone, that's come tonight, uh, for participation in county government. I think it's exemplified once again that Surrey County is a wonderful county to live in, has wonderful opportunities, a lot of good things going on and a lot of challenges going forward. And I appreciate all the county staff effort and all you gentlemen that, uh, help, uh, figure out, uh, how we're going to advance toward that path in the best interest of everybody. So tonight was a good meeting that kind of displayed what's going on and the challenges that we normally face, and I look forward to, uh, hopefully the opportunity to help face these obstacles along with you folks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Goins?
Give a shout out to our air- airport and our airport director and employees. Uh, second in economic impact in the state, and I think that's big. The Mary News has already, already ran an article. Uh, but that's big for our county and, you know, talking about it in the audit. You know, we talked a lot about it the other night, and Eric, I don't think we realize, uh, what goes into that, and I. And I appreciate, appreciate all the efforts there.
Like to echo uh comments by Commissioner Johnson. Was a great meeting, informative meeting tonight, and Mr. Black and and uh I guess Commissioner slash slash Sergeant Hutchins, Commissioner of Mount E. Uh, and Travis Reeves, their presentations tonight and uh Mr. Chair, uh gentleman, talk about our finances. Uh, just a very informative meeting, uh, very uh transparency to the community. And uh just thank everyone that attended, Eagle Scouts, uh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, um, some time ago, last fall, I think it was October, uh, a group came to Suri County, um, some ministers, um uh gentlemen from Stun's Throw Ministry, um uh the Lifeline Pregnancy Help Center from Elkin, um, made a request that Suri County um pass a sanctity of life resolution affirming our support for um the sanctity of human life. Um, this uh resolution, uh, I've been over this quite a lot and um looked at a lot of different resolutions along this line. Um, at the time, the board, um, I think all five of us expressed an interest to pursue this, and I'm glad that we did. I did, went back and forth. I've had resolutions, looked at several different ones. Um, and actually today, John Yates, the Suri County, I mean, the Wilkes County manager, sent me the resolution that Wilkes County passed in two thousand and twenty-one. And it is uh called a resolution for life. The preamble to it here says a resul- uh, resolution for life. Uh, ours, we just, I just changed out Suri County to Suri County from Wilkes County. It says, "A resolution of the Suri County Board of Commissioners declaring Suri County, North Carolina to be a strong advocate for life and urging citizens of the county to promote and defend the unalienable right to life and the inherent dignity of all human beings, including the unborn, from conception or fertilization through all stages of development." This um resolution is fairly innocuous um in that um it doesn't go into a lot of um um very specifics um as far as legislation. Uh, basically, it's a resolution that says that this board um believes in the uh, the sanctity of human life. Um, I'll read here, um, there's quite a lot here to the first of it that uh quotes uh some uh from the United States Constitution, uh, the Bill of Rights. But then, when we get to the second page here, it says, um "Whereas the Supreme Court of the United States, in the case of Polker versus Doe, four thirty-two, U.S. Code one nineteen nineteen ninety-seven concluded that the Constitution does not forbid a city or state pursuant to the democratic process from expressing a preference for normal childbirth, childbirth instead of abortion. And whereas the Suri County Board of Commissioners desires to express its strong feelings and deep concern that all human beings in the county of Suri at every stage of development, including before birth, should be afforded protection from acts of cruelty and be treated humanely and with dignity. And whereas the Suri County Board of Commissioners further desires to declare Suri County to be a strong advocate for life and to urge the county's citizens to promote and defend the unalienable right to life and the inherent dignity of all human beings, including the unborn from conception or fertilization through all stages of development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Suri County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its strong feeling and deep concern that all human beings in the county of Suri at every stage of development, including before birth, should be afforded uh protection from acts of cruelty and be treated humanely and with dignity. Be it further resolved that the Suri County Board of Commissioners here declares Suri County to be a strong advocate for life and urges the citizens, county citizens to promote and defend the unalienable right to life and the inherent dignity of all human beings, including the unborn from conception or fertilization through all stages of development. And be it further resolved that the Suri County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves to use all means within its power to support the sanctity of human life in accordance with its God-given responsibilities as the people's elected governing body this sixth day of February twenty twenty-three." I'll just say that um uh Sunday was sanctity of human life, um, Sunday. Um, this is a uh uh pamphlet from um Lifeline Pregnancy Help Center that uh was distributed in our church on Sunday. And uh our pastor preached a tremendous sermon on this. Uh, I was very touched by it. The thing uh that I did take out of the resolution from Wilkes was um the um Wilkes says, "Be it further resolved that a plaque be erected uh by the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners at such a time and place and such a matter as the board shall deem appropriate, memorializing this resolution." I just felt that was unnecessary. We've got enough plaques and things outside and um those, those kinds of things. I think that it requires a very um unusual circumstance to have a a plaque or something on the county grounds here. Um, the thing that I did like about this resolution, as I said, it didn't get into a lot of um timelines as far as um you know, uh, that we've read about in the media in light of the Dobbs decision with the United States Supreme Court. Um, this doesn't lay out a lot of um specifics, but it simply says that our board um respects the dignity of human life and uh and that all humans um preborn and born humans deserve respect um from cruelty and to be treated humanely and with dignity. And um, so there you have it, gentlemen. That's um, that's what I have, and um I've spoken with um a lot of folks uh in the last few days in this regard, and um, there seems to be quite a contingent of people that um are interested in coming here on the sixth of February to uh support this. And I will add that um the resolution that uh we were presented here um in in some form, all these change a little bit, but uh Wilkes has passed it. Uh, Yadkin County's passed it. Ash County's passed it. Uh, these are in our immediate vicinity. Um, Davie County passed it, Randolph, and there's some others, but uh nevertheless, um, this was brought to us, and I think it warrants uh some action, so I'll open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll uh you know, we're not, we're not making the law on the abortion or the sanctity of life and the protection of it in every circumstance or in any circumstance, actually. I think this is more or less a symbolic resolution that is being requested of the county by those people who have a uh soft uh heart and uh inclined toward the sanctity of life, realizing it is a gift from God. That's what I believe personally, and that it ought to be protected instead of just discarded at the kind of rate and and uh numbers that it is in modern society, in modern America. I, you know, I don't think it gets into how many weeks before you determine life begins or when, you know, I think that's up to the lawmakers and the powers that be. What this is, is a resolution, I believe, that I understand it to say, that supports the first leg of the North Carolina General Assembly here on a grassroots, local county basis that says, you know, for the most part, we believe that life is a gift from God, and we hold it in precious places in our hearts, and we believe in the sanctity of life. And for the most part, we're not here quivering over, is it twenty weeks? Is it fifteen weeks? Is it twenty-five weeks? And under what conditions can it or can it not be executed? We're not going to, we're not now or never going to be able to determine that as county commissioner. What I think it says is, we as a county board of commissioners, agree with the basic essentials, that life is precious. The sanctity of life is something that most of us and most of our constituents agree that is the the correct path of and and thought uh that we as Christians and human beings ought to have. And I have no problem with the resolution as written, and it's just simply a recommendation to our North Carolina General Assembly, who are going to be taking up these laws, as is every state, post the Dobbs decision at the Supreme Court. And I think they ought to kind of know how we feel, and I want to send them messages that we feel like the sanctity of life is precious here in Suri County. And I will, I have no issue with it. If I was a General Assembly legislature, I might have a few other ideas about how we'd exactly formulate the law. That's not, we're trying, that's not what we're trying to do here tonight. We're simply saying that life is precious, and we support the general ideology that uh, that life begins at conception. And for some of us and for others, we determine when we think that might be, but for me, I believe that's when it begins. And I think we're saying it's precious and that uh life is precious and that the unborn is precious and that we, as a county, believe overall that the the message to our General Assembly ought to be, we think they ought to protect it more than they ought to destroy it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I appreciate uh and I support what y'all said. I'm, I've said all along on pro-life and sending this general message i- is fine with me. Uh, I would like, I would like to add, I I'll decide, I guess, when we, when we vote, uh, I I might, I'll probably go along with this one hundred percent. But I I'm gonna add that my beliefs are that there are some exceptions where abortion could very well be the the best choice pertaining, and it's just a few, such as the mother's life, uh, possibly rape and incest, but I know there's other avenues too that can be discussed, such as adoption and all those things. But I just wanna, I wanna, I want people to know that I, that's how I feel, and that's my faith. But I am certainly pro-life, and this in general is a, is a good resolution.
Thank you for your honesty, Commissioner Johnson. Gentlemen?
I, I agree with Commissioner Johnson. That's kind of my, my take on it. I, I believe I'm pro-life, but I also believe, I said this in October, there's perspectives, uh, and people have different perspectives about it. And uh, I worked in a, in a field that I saw some of the negatives of, of some of the things that we talked about. So rape, incest, help the mother, I think, or provide options.
Mr. Marion?
This is, this is a good uh resolution, and I like it a whole lot more than I like personally. Uh, it's a lot less wordy, and uh it makes things a lot plainer, and it ju- it just says that we are pro-life and that we protect our innocent children, which is the most precious commodity on the face of the earth. I agree with uh Commissioner Johnson and Goins that uh there are exceptions. And I have lived to see these exceptions uh happen, and uh, help of the mother and the baby, incest, rape, um you know, once, once that stuff happens, that happens to a young child, teenager, whatever, uh that messes with them for the rest of their life. So uh, I do think this is a good resolution, and uh I just more be known that I had the same feelings as others, so uh yes, this is, this is far, far, far better than uh what I read the first time, so, thank you.
Know you've already set it up for the, our next meeting, but I'd be, I'd be willing to vote tonight. That's how, of course, what people will take, but I will, all right.
I, I understand that, and I think, you know, the groups that brought this to us want a chance to speak publicly about it again. Uh, so I think they deserve that opportunity. Um, okay, all right, that's uh all I've got, gentlemen, and uh we'll pick it back up. Uh, we've got a request for closed session.
Motion going closed.
Motion to go into close, Commissioner Marion? Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion, Commissioner Tucker, second, Commissioner Goins, any to discuss.